I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic, to which it stands indivisible, and to the justice of our home.
Motion, Counsel Gould to approve the records, so move all in favor and oppose the vote. We've got quite a few people here, so we're gonna try and, with no objections, we're going to move a little bit out of order. Counselor Turco?
Mr. President, under suspension of the rules, move to receive item 7B.
You've heard the motion to receive item 7B. Update regarding administrative consent order 143 Linfield Street. All in favor and opposed? Go ahead, Counsel Turco.
Mr. President, move to receive late communications from Building Commissioner Altal Rico, also regarding 143 Linfield Street.
Heard the motion, all in favor and opposed to vote. Counsel Turco.
Thank you, Mr. President. So just for the public's knowledge, the document in question is in response to, 7B is in regards to the stockpiles on site labeled S1 through S6. And Mass D E P has approved the removal plan and asked that they be removed within 30 days off the site, which is good news. Also, the second part of that communication is regarding an N T plan, which is the asbestos abatement work. And Mass D E P has ordered that that be completed by September 1st at the latest, within the building and any asbestos on the exterior with conditions attached here within for those. And the late communication from Commissioner Tellerico issued a notice giving contact 14 days to remove the tanks, which have been deemed empty from the exterior of the property as well as the interior of the property. And I just, for the record, I want to say thank you to a number of elected officials that assisted with pushing this. I've been told that I'm a little impatient, and I would probably have to agree with that, but in this case, I think my impatience is justified. But I do want to say thank you to the mayor, especially Counsel Walsh, and Representative Walsh and Representative Speliotis. And Senator Lovely for their assistance in this matter. And any other questions?
I believe there's a representative from, Representative Speliotis wanted to address the counsel. If you've come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. My name's Mike Searls. I work for Representative Ted Speliotis. Thank you, Counselor. My name's Mike Searls. I work for Representative Ted Speliotis. Through you to the members. Thank you very much, Counsel Turco, for bringing this to the representatives' attention and continuing to fight for your constituents in the city of Peabody. The representatives proud to be able to help.
Anyone else? Counsel Turco, you're all set?
Thank you, that's all regarding 7B.
Thank you. I am gonna ask anyone who comes to the mic and speak tonight, it's very important, we have the fans going, it's very hot, please make sure the mic is right in front of you and speak loud and clear so everyone in the room can hear you. I'd rather have that than turn off the fans, it's very hot tonight. Thank you. And we are going to also, in interest of moving some people out of here, I'm gonna skip to the Legal Affairs Committee. Counsel Walsh has his report.
Thank you, Mr. President. Under suspension of the rules, I'll give my report from the Legal Affairs Committee. We met earlier this evening. Counselors Manning, Gravell, Turco, Gould, McGinn, Mitsoulas, Charis, and Sinewitz were present. There were two items on the agenda this evening. The first was the request for a discontinuance permit at Park Place on Newbury Street. And the motion was to recommend that the board hereby determine that the issuance of a discontinuance permit by the Peabody City Council, which would acknowledge the sale of the park to a resident-owned housing cooperative corporation, would not aggravate the shortage of safe, decent, affordable mobile home park accommodations in the city of Peabody, and therefore, based upon the foregoing findings and conclusions and all of the evidence presented at the hearing, recommend that the Peabody City Council issue a discontinuance permit to the cooperative pursuant to Section 18 through 58 of the Code of the City of Peabody, Massachusetts. So moved.
You've heard the motion. Any discussion on it? Roll call, vote.
Counselors Manning, Martin?
Yes.
Garabedian, Gravell?
Yes.
Turco?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
McGinn?
Yes.
Walsh?
Yes.
Mitsoulas?
Yes.
Charis?
Yes.
Sinewitz?
Yes.
Saslaw?
Yes.
Motion carries 11 to nothing.
Counsel Walsh?
Thank you, Mr. President. The second motion was the issue of authorizing the mayor to enter into a license agreement with Maritime and Northeast Pipeline in the vicinity of Independence Greenway and Glenn Drive to install roughly 1,700 feet of electric cable. And this is a maintenance update of current utilities that are there. So moved.
Heard the motion? Any questions? Roll call, vote.
Counselors Manning, Martin?
Yes.
Garabedian?
Yes.
Gravell?
Yes.
Turco?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
McGinn?
Yes.
Walsh?
Yes.
Mitsoulas?
Yes.
Charis?
Yes.
Sinewitz?
Saslaw?
Yes.
Motion carries 11 to nothing.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Walsh. And now we're going to go into the regular meeting. Item 4A, I'm gonna ask for Counsel Garabedian to run the meeting for the next couple of special permit hearings, so I can take a seat down. Okay, special permit for a hearings with the clerk, please read the notice.
Notice is hereby given that the City Council of the City of Peabody, acting as a special permit granting authority, will conduct a public hearing on Tuesday evening, July 18, 2017, at 7:30 PM in the Franklin Wiggan Auditorium, City Hall, 24 Lowell Street, Peabody, Mass, on the application from Jesse Jalbert to Margin Street, Salem, Mass., for a special permit to allow for a contractor's yard located at 29 Farm Avenue, Peabody, Mass., filed in accordance with Sections 4.2.5, 6.1, and 15.7 of the Peabody zoning ordinance. Peabody City Council Counsel Joel D. Saslaw, City Council President.
Counselor?
Is the applicant here?
The applicants, uh, wanna come to the podium? Would you like to state your name and address for the record, please?
Hey, Jesse Jalbert, 16 Nursery Street in Beverly. And I'm here for a special permit to be able to park some trucks that we have, contractor's yard on 29 Farm Ave. in Peabody.
Thank you. Anybody? Is there anybody in the audience that would like to be in opposition? Would anybody like to speak in opposition? Wanna state your name and address for the record, please?
My name is Russell Donovan, 12 Quail Road, Peabody. Before I came to the City Council meeting tonight, I was on the city website. 29 Farm Ave. does not exist. There's no lot, a plot, marking, so you're gonna vote on something that has no delineation in the city records. So before you approve this special permit, I'd like to know what land it encompasses and what is a contractor's yard? Because up in that area of Farm Ave., we've had numerous violations of wetland protection. And before you vote for something, I'd like to know what we're voting for and what it encompasses, because it's not on the city map. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Donovan. Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to speak in opposition? Anybody like to speak in opposition? Is there anybody that would like to speak in favor of the petitioner? Anybody would like to speak in favor of the petitioner? Counsel Saslaw?
Thank you. I had the opportunity to meet with Mr. Jalbert up at the site. And basically, in essence, what he's doing is he's, the name of his business is One Call Junk Hall. And so he'll be going to people's homes and offices and taking, picking up the items that they want to get rid of. He'll be storing them for a short period of time, and then he'll be moving them to transfer facilities. In addition, if you look in your packet, there's a submission from the Peabody, from Sharon Cameron, the Director of Health, who's been involved to a high degree, about the expectation as far as it's a short-term situation and nothing long-term, also not storing anything, not storing, not storing full containers. These would be containers that would be, once again, turned over very quickly. As far as the business in the area, it's conducive to the area. It's basically, if you know Farm Ave., it's not really a residential area at all. It's down by the Department of Public Horse Building. There's a couple of other businesses there that are more industrial in nature. I think it's a good fit for the area, and I will be approving, I'll be approving, voting in approval of this permit.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other counselors? Counsel Sinewitz?
Thank you, Mr. President. So is, on this property, and I don't, I get an idea where it is, is there a building there? Are you gonna be putting all these dumpsters outside? Is that the plan? Is there an indoor storage of it? Or is everything just gonna be outside?
It's just outside. There's no building there. So it'll be our junk removal trucks parked, and then dumpsters if we have any available. Most of the time, they're in customers' houses.
Is this property fenced in?
The 50% of it, or probably 40% of it, is fenced in.
Can you elaborate a little more on what 50, what does that mean?
So I did, when I put a fence up, basically it went halfway up the sides and across the front to protect it, and it had black mesh over the fence and everything, so it's, you know, not visible or nice or anything like that.
And how big are the dumpsters? Are they roll-offs or are they dumpsters?
Yeah, they're roll-offs. Yep. And they're 14 feet long.
14 feet, okay. I just, I just, is it, is it a fence where you can't see through, or is it a chain link fence?
It's a chain link fence with a mesh fabric around it.
So you can't see through it because that was not gonna, I know, is this the same business that tried to go on Pulaski Street?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and that just wasn't an appropriate site. So if you're up there and you're fenced in and no one can really see it, if no one's, I don't know how many truck trips, or how many, how many trucks are you planning on?
There'd be six or seven there.
Six or seven trucks coming?
Yeah, yep.
And you have your hours of operation?
And most of the stuff during the day is emptied right away. We load from a customer's house and it gets emptied out.
So you're gonna have some sort of vehicles coming in to empty these constantly?
They don't empty there, they empty at Republic Services right around the corner, or the Paper Recycling Place in Salem, or Metal Place in Lin, Metal Recycling Lynn.
Okay. I get a better understanding of what you're doing. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, sure.
I'll say Counselor. Counsel, no, Counsel Gravell and Counsel.
Yeah, I was just curious, Google, I looked at Google Maps and it shows it next to the Weiss Landscape Company, is that where it is?
Where they used to be.
Where they used to be.
Yeah.
And it looks like an area that's pretty much surrounded by trees as well?
It is.
And it looks like rare that area is those big piles of, it looks like mulch and wood and all sorts of stuff?
Yeah, there's a mulch place down at the beginning of the street.
Yeah, so it looks like 29, which is, so is 29, did that include the Weiss property too, or is that not the Weiss property?
I don't think so. I'd have to ask actually Manny, the landlord of that, the details on that. I don't think so, though.
Are you gonna do anything to disturb the tree frontage to get into the property directly, or are you gonna access through, through the Weiss land?
No, there is a, there's a fence and a gate right in the front of it right now that we would drive through. We would not get through it from the Weiss property.
But you're not gonna remove any trees or anything?
No.
Okay. All right, thanks for the questions. But there is that 29, I see it on the map.
Thank you, Counsel Manning.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I see that you need to bring in fill to the area. Why do you need to bring in earth and material to fill the area for grading purposes? What's the need there?
That lot really sloped off to the point where you wouldn't be able to park any vehicles in there, so it was, it was brought up in the back just to elevate it and get it a little more level.
So it's already been done?
It's been done.
Okay, because this permit asks you if you will be bringing in, so you did it before.
It's, yeah, it was about a year ago or so that I moved into that area and then wasn't allowed in there anymore because there was, this special permit had to happen. So it was.
So you moved forward some time ago and now you're here for the special permit?
Yep. And then we've been out of there for a good year and going through this process. But there's no more fill being brought in. It was brought in.
Do you know where the fill came from?
From wood trucking right next door.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Counsel Manning. Counsel Turco?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To address a few questions, specifically, Mr. Donovan, first, Russ, regarding the wetlands, you can see the wetlands delineation at the rear of the property. It's flagged and marked, and he's a pretty good distance from the wetlands. Regarding 29, it does exist. Why it's not in the city database, I'm not quite sure, but it does exist. I was just there, as a matter of fact. As far as Counsel Gravell's concerned, the, our question, the, so everybody knows, this is on Farm Ave. as you head toward, the public services facility would be on the right-hand side, public services would be a little further up on your left-hand side. There is a L-shaped fence on the property, so it's not completely enclosed on all four sides, but the fence that you referred to, Counsel Gravell, regarding cutting down trees, is already in existence and there are no trees in that area, and it is visible from the road. So the only thing I would ask Counsel Saslaw is that he makes sure that anything, any debris on that property stays within a container and is not visible from the street. And I think that's all I have. Thank you.
That's all, John? Counsel? Any other counselors? Okay, motion to close public hearing?
Motion to close the public hearing?
On the motion, all in favor and opposed to vote. Counsel Saslaw?
Yes, and just for clarification to the petitioner, your application, we did, I wanna clarify this, Monday through Friday, 6 to 6, Saturdays from 6:00 AM to 2:00 PM, correct?
Yep.
And then closed on Sundays?
Closed, yep.
And, and then the other part of the special permit, the other condition is that it'll be, it will be, the fence is there currently and there will be mesh around the fence, it will not be visible from a drive-by.
Yep.
And any debris will be picked up and disposed of properly.
Yep.
So those are the special permits are the condition. So I'd like to make a motion to approve the application from Jesse Jalbert to Margin Street, Salem, Mass., for a special permit to allow for contractor's yard located 29 Farm Ave. of Peabody, Mass., as filed in accordance with Sections 4.2.5, 6.1, and 15.7 of the Peabody zoning ordinance. So moved.
You heard the motion? On the motion, roll call.
Counselors Manning, Martin?
Yes.
Saslaw?
Yes.
Turco?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
McGinn?
Yes.
Walsh?
Yes.
Mitsoulas?
Yes.
Charis?
Yes.
Sinewitz?
Yes.
Garabedian?
Yes.
Motion carries 11 to nothing.
Thank you.
Okay, special permit, item B, with the clerk, please read the notice.
Counsel Saslaw? Yes, this is a continuation from a recessed public hearing held at our last meeting for the Big Pig BBQ and Catering Company on 108 Newbury Street. At that time, when we recessed the public hearing, we came up with an action plan to do a site visit, to do a site visit that, which happened last Thursday at 11 o'clock AM. I met with a number of residents and Board of Trustees members of Huntington Woods at 11 o'clock so they could see the process of the smoker, and then we went back at 5:30 to get a report. In addition, also joining us were a few city officials, but more importantly, Sharon Cameron from the Department of Public Health, along with John Yale. Chris Labella, the, one of the co-owners, met us there and explained to us what I saw the unit. I will report back on that, actually, I'll report on that now. A couple of things that did happen when the smoke was, once we got it up and running and he allowed everyone to do a full analysis and look at the item, look at the smoker itself, we've come up with a couple of special conditions to add to the permit. One of the items that was of great concern was, to the residents, was the smoke was gonna be outside of the building. And since that meeting, we have decided, they have agreed to put the smoker 100% inside the building with its own evacuation system as far as evacuating the smoke. But even with it running that day, it happened to be a southerly wind, which actually would blow the smoke down into the south, to the Huntington Woods area, if there was any data to attest, this probably was the best day to do a test. After it was up and running, Inspector, Director Cameron did go down with Inspector Yale. They went through the process and actually, we have two late communications I'd like to receive, make a motion to receive a late communication from Sharon Cameron, Director of Health, and also motion to receive late communication from Herb Rossstein on behalf of the Board of Trustees, which he is a member of. Motion to receive those?
On the motion, all in favor and opposed to vote.
And as you can see, we also got information from Sharon Cameron that in addition that there was, there was no odor at the Huntington Woods. She also reported that back since the, there are three additional smoking companies and Peabody BBQ companies. We've got Hoppy's BBQ, located off of Forest Street, densely populated area of Ward 4, Smokey Bones at the North Shore Mall, and Tennessee BBQ on 114. There's only been one nuisance odor complaint associated with Hoppy's of November of 2016 and no subsequent complaints, so that obviously was a good sign and we thought that would lead to, would fill be a successful site visit and test. In addition, after the site visit, unsolicited, I received, I did receive the late communication on Monday from Herb Rossstein, who I deal with on a continual basis. There was a Board of Trustees at Huntington Woods, I usually interact with Herb, but in this particular case, I interact with all of them. I reached out to every Board of Trustee member. And Herb came back and once again also stated that they would, the Board of Trustees would not, would be withholding any opposition. Obviously, the resident, any other residents there are more than welcome to voice your opposition, but the Board of Trustees would be supportive of it based upon two conditions. The two conditions, the smoke would not be outside, but rather installed inside the building, and that also the refrigeration unit would be inside the gravel area, which would be to the rear of the building but to the left of the old drive-through from Dunkin' Donuts. Those, those conditions, the owner, Chris Labella, has agreed to. And also, if you'll notice on Director Cameron's memo, she asked for a point person for the owners to be able to contact and the Board of Health regarding any nuisance complaints if they did come up. And Chris has, is publicly going to be, the owner is going to be that point person and will be communicating that in writing with his contact information. And so that's kinda gives you a good synopsis at this point. I know some people, I believe, would like to speak on the situation, whether it be pro or negative, and I allow you, allow them to speak where we just recessed the public hearing.
Sure.
We've, Big Pig has counsel here also. Thank you.
Jacque, do you wanna go? Did you wanna say a few words first before we open it up?
I wanted to bring up the two memorandums that Counsel Saslaw has indicated that they become part of the record. Chris Labella, who's here this evening, had a few remarks that he wanted, and I thought it'd be appropriate since, I thought it would be appropriate since Chris was actually the person who conducted that onsite visit, that Chris could sort of relate his experience in, so it's very brief.
Chris Labella, 14 Blue J Road, Linfield. I just wanna thank you for the opportunity to present the information tonight, it's been a great experience. I would like to thank the Inspection Services Department, Altal Rico, Board of Health, Sharon and John Yale, as well as Ward 5 Counselor Joel Saslaw, along with the rest of the council to help me through this process. We've worked with the Building Inspector and Board of Health to see that the premises is up to code. After receiving feedback from both the Board of Health as well as the community of Huntington Woods, we've decided to move the smoker indoors in order to further prevent any perceived problems. We've purchased a state-of-the-art smoker and exhaust system for that, similar to those utilized by some of our neighboring food businesses that also provide coal and wood-fired meals. As many of you saw last week during our smoker demonstration, we use a minimal amount of wood, less than someone in town would put in their own fireplace. And yeah, we just really want an opportunity to prove ourselves, and, and we have enacted an emergency response plan for any complaints received. I'm assigning myself as the point person for that.
And the, Sharon is currently on vacation.
Jacque, Counsel, wanna use the microphone?
Sharon is currently on vacation and we intend to meet with her after this evening and present the contact information and the response.
Okay. So is there anybody, did you wanna say something? Sure now.
Yep.
All right. Is there anybody that'd like to speak in opposition of the petitioner? Anybody would like to speak in opposition of the petitioner? Is there anybody in favor, like to speak in favor of the petitioner?
We've got a couple.
Okay. You just wanna state your name and address for the record, please?
Sure. My name is Carrie Connolly. I live at 32 Herrick Road in Peabody, Mass. I have two boys that have been employed by Chris and Big Pig Catering for the last five years. They have made a lot of money to pay for their college education, to help my husband and I take some of those costs away, and they've been a wonderful, respected experience working for that company. We've been to many events with my family, hired and attended, and they've been really great, wonderful events, very positive experience working with Chris and the Big Pig.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to speak in favor? Okay, wanna, wanna state your name and address for the record, please?
Michael Bertolino, 6 Walter Truck Drive in Peabody. I am a vendor, a customer and a friend of Chris and Big Pig. They recently just did an event for me and my wife, did a fantastic job as always. I, I am in the wholesale meat distribution business, so I supply them with a lot of meat for their company. And we have seen them grow from day one to where they are today, and they've grown a great business on treating customers right and treating their employees right, as you can hear. And hopefully, they can find a new home here in Peabody.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to speak in favor?
John Connolly, 32 Herrick Road, Peabody. I'd like to second what my wife said first, but I also think that you'll find Chris is a stand-up guy and a stand-up businessman, and it's an upgrade to what's already there, been there on Route 1, so I think it's a plus. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anybody else that'd like to speak in favor? Anybody, counselors? Counsel Saslaw?
Yes, and I just wanted to close with this, you know, it's very interesting, you look at a business by itself and you, and you wonder what type of an impact it can make. And just to give everyone in the audience, my fellow counselors who weren't there that day, understand that he runs a catering business. He rents his trucks from Hertz, which is right next door. Then sometimes, unfortunately, those trucks get in accidents, and he brings them to Fred Peterson's Autobody right next door in Peabody. And also, once a year, he needs to get those trucks and vehicles inspected, and he brings those vehicles to the Speedy Oil Change right next door in Peabody. So I think it's a great opportunity to see how a small business not only affects itself but a lot of people in the community. I'm feeling confident, I appreciate the site visit, I think it was a good experience for everyone, and I do know that Chris will be a owner who's responsive if there are any issues. I don't expect there to be any, but every time I've called him, he's been receptive and open, and I think any counselors who interacted with him, and also the residents of Huntington Woods who did come up that day, saw that experience. So on that, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Counsel Gould?
If we can close the public hearing and then we can, we can discuss if you'd like to.
Okay. Counsel Saslaw?
So, motion to close the public hearing?
On the motion, all in favor and opposed to vote. Counsel Saslaw?
Counsel Gould? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I attended the off-site visit along with Counselor Charis, and Chris, I have to give you credit, you heard the concerns at the last hearing, you understood what the neighbors and some of our fellow counselors were concerned about, you took action, you went and fixed it. I give you, give you a lot of credit for it, you, I hope you run your operation the way you handled this little bump in the road, so good luck.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Gould. Counselor Manning, Martin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I have to tell you how impressed I am with the reports that we've gotten with how receptive you were to working with the neighborhood and doing the right thing, and you really did make some concessions that many businesses would walk away from, but you listened and you were willing to work with the neighborhood, so much so that one resident [inaudible].[773.34]
From Herb Rossstein, on behalf of the Board of Trustees, which he is a member of. Motion received those?
On the motion, all in favor, any opposed? Vote.
And as you can see, we also got information from Sharon Cameron that in addition that there was no order at the Huntington Woods. She also reported that back since the, there are three additional smoking companies and PBD barbecue companies. We've got Hoppy's Barbecue located off of Forest Street, densely populated area of Ward Four, Smokey Bones at the North Shore Mall and Tennessee Barbecue on Route 114. There's only been one nuisance odor complaint associated with Hoppy's of November of 2016 and no subsequent complaints. So that obviously was a good sign and we thought that would lead to what would feel to be a successful site visit and test. In addition, after the site visit, unsolicited, I received, I did receive the late communication on Monday from Herb Rossstein, who I deal with on a continual basis. There was a Board of Trustees at Huntington Woods. I usually interact with Herb, but in this particular case, I interact with all of them. I reached out to every Board of Trustee member. And Herb came back and once again also stated that they would, the Board of Trustees would not, would be withholding any opposition. Obviously, the resident, any other residents there are more than welcome to voice your opposition, but the Board of Trustees would be supportive of it based upon two conditions. The two conditions, the smoke would not be outside, but rather installed inside the building, and that also the refrigeration unit would be inside the gravel area, which would be to the rear of the building, but to the left of the old drive-through from Dunkin' Donuts. Those conditions, the owner Chris LaBelle has agreed to. And also, if you'll notice on Director Cameron's memo, she asked for a point person for the owners to be able to contact and the Board of Health regarding any nuisance complaints if they did come up. And Chris has, is publicly going to be, the owner is going to be that point person and will be communicating that in writing with his contact information. And so that's kind of gives you a good synopsis at this point. I know some people, I believe, would like to speak on the situation, whether it be pro or negative, and I allow you, allow them to speak where we just recessed the public hearing.
Yep.
Big Pig has counsel here also. Thank you.
Jacque, do you want to go? Did you want to say a few words first before we open it up?
I wanted to bring up the two memorandums that Counselor Sassla has indicated that they become part of the record. Chris LaBella, who's here this evening, had a few remarks that he wanted, and I thought it'd be appropriate since, I thought it would be appropriate since Chris was actually the person who conducted that onsite visit, that Chris could sort of relate his experience in some, very brief.
Chris LaBella, 14 Blue J Road, Linfield. I just want to thank you for the opportunity to present the information tonight. It's been a great experience. I would like to thank the Inspection Services Department, Al Tellarico, Board of Health, Sharon and John Yale, as well as Ward Five Counselor Joel Sassla, along with the rest of the council to help me through this process. We've worked with the Building Inspector and Board of Health to see that the premises is up to code. After receiving feedback from both the Board of Health as well as the community of Huntington Woods, we've decided to move the smoker indoors in order to further prevent any perceived problems. We've purchased a state-of-the-art smoker and exhaust system for that, similar to those utilized by some of our neighboring food businesses that also provide coal and wood-fired meals. As many of you saw last week during our smoker demonstration, we use a minimal amount of wood, less than someone in town would put in their own fireplace. And yeah, we just really want an opportunity to prove ourselves. And we have enacted an emergency response plan for any complaints received. I'm assigning myself as the point person for that.
And the, Sharon is currently on vacation.
Jacque, Council, want to use the microphone?
Sharon is currently on vacation and we intend to meet with her after this evening and present the contact information and the response.
So is there anybody, did you want to say something? Sure now.
Yep.
All right. Is there anybody that'd like to speak in opposition of the petitioner? Anybody would like to speak in opposition of the petitioner? Is there anybody in favor, like to speak in favor of the petitioner?
We've got to come.
Okay. Do you just want to say your name and address for the record, please?
Sure. My name is Kerry Connolly. I live at 32 Herrick Road in Peabody, Mass. I have two boys that have been employed by Chris and Big Pig Catering for the last five years. They have made a lot of money to pay for their college education, to help my husband and I take some of those costs away. And they've been a wonderful, respected experience working for that company. We've been to many events with my family, hired and attended, and they've been really great, wonderful events, very positive experience working with Chris and the Big Pig.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to speak in favor? Want to, want to state your name and address for the record, please?
Michael Bertolino, 6 Walter Truck Drive in Peabody. I am a vendor, a customer and a friend of Chris and Big Pig. They recently just did an event for me and my wife, did a fantastic job as always. I, I am in the wholesale meat distribution business, so I supply them with a lot of meat for their company. And we have seen them grow from day one to where they are today, and they've grown a great business on treating customers right and treating their employees right, as you can hear. And hopefully, they can find a new home here in Peabody.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to speak in favor? Just want to state your name and address for the record, please?
John Connolly, 32 Herrick Road, Peabody. I'd like to second what my wife said first, but I also think that you'll find Chris is a stand-up guy and a stand-up businessman, and it's an upgrade to what's already there, been there on Route One. So I think it's a plus. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anybody else that would like to speak in favor? Anybody, Counselors? Counselor Sassla?
Yes, and I just wanted to close with this. You know, it's very interesting, you look at a business by itself and you, you wonder what type of an impact it can make. And just to give everyone in the audience, my fellow counselors who weren't there that day, understand that he runs a catering business. He rents his trucks from Hertz, which is right next door. Then sometimes, unfortunately, those trucks get in accidents, and he brings them to Fred Peterson's Auto Body, right next door in Peabody. And also, once a year, he needs to get those trucks and vehicles inspected, and he brings those vehicles to the Speedy Oil Change, right next door in Peabody. So I think it's a great opportunity to see how a small business not only affects us itself, but a lot of people in the community. I'm feeling confident. I appreciate the site visit. I think it was a good experience for everyone, and I do know that Chris will be a owner who's responsive. If there are any issues, I don't expect there to be any, but every time I've called him, he's been receptive and open, and I think any counselors who interacted with him, and also the residents of Huntington Woods who did come up that day, saw that experience. So on that, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Counselor Gould.
If we can close the public hearing, and then we can, we can discuss if you'd like to.
Okay. Counselor Sassla?
Motion to close the public hearing.
On the motion, all in favor, any opposed? The vote? Counselor Sassla?
Counselor Gould. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I attended the off-site visit along with Counselor Sharis. And Chris, I have to give you credit. You heard the concerns at the last hearing. You understood what the neighbors and some of our fellow counselors were concerned about. You took action, you went and fixed it. I give you, give you a lot of credit for it. I hope you run your operation the way you handled this little bump in the road, so good luck.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Gould. Counselor Manning Martin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I have to tell you how impressed I am with the reports that we've gotten, with how receptive you were to working with the neighborhood and doing the right thing. And you really did make some concessions that many businesses would walk away from. But you listened and you're willing to work with the neighborhood, so much so that one resident actually came here this evening to just make sure that I knew, because I did not go to the smoke, whatever, the display, yeah, the site visit. I did not go to that, but she wanted to make sure, and she knew I was not at that, but she wanted to make sure that I knew how receptive and how professional and squared away that the business is. So I'm very pleased with that, and I'm glad that the neighbors were heard, and I'm glad that we have businessmen like yourself and your partner moving into that area. Because I did do my own little site visit the Monday after the meeting, and I drove around back. And I think having a business that is run the way you clearly run yours will be definitely an asset for that area, as it could use some cleaning up, and the dumpsters were overflowing, it looked like they hadn't been picked up in weeks. And I know that you, just looking at you and listening to how people describe your business, you're not going to stand for that or allow that. So I think this all worked out extremely well, and I'm glad to support the petition. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Manning. Counselor LaBelle?
Thank you, Council President. When I first heard of the venture that you were going after, I, I had some concerns, obviously, that were amplified by the neighbors who made it a point to contact me. And unfortunately, Counselor Sassla knows how to schedule things, and he waits till I'm out of town on business before he schedules, you know, demonstrations or anything like that. But, so I didn't get a chance to see your demonstration. But I did get a chance to hear from some of those very same people, who were objectors, who became convinced that you'd be a great neighbor. And for that, I want to commend you. I think it was a great thing that you did. I'm glad that we held this open, that we didn't vote that night, and I intend to support your application.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor LaBelle. Counselor Charis?
Thank you. I did attend that site visit, and I was very impressed in how they conducted themselves and the whole mannerism of listening to the neighbors and making concessions, as Counselor Manning had mentioned, that changed some things around to make sure they're good neighbors. And they are. And I had other people who contacted me, who used them as an events before, and say how professional and how clean and the type of service they, they run. When he talked about using only four logs for his, his process, I got to tell you, this weekend, I burned five or six logs in my fire pit, and I probably had more smoke coming out of there than I did see the stack. So the equipment that he's using, again, as we spoke about last time, is, you know, top, top-rated, good, good equipment. Wanted to be so efficient with utilizing the heat and dispersing the smoke, when you were there, you couldn't even see the smoke coming out of the stack. And that was before the ventilation system that he speaks about. And as a good neighbor, this is one thing that I want to point out, that some people may not realize. Behind his, next to his lot, is a burial of one plot. And the first thing he did, and just by talking to him, he went over and cleaned it out for respect. It was overrun with weeds, it was disrepair, and he says, "My intention is always to make sure that plot is taken care of." And I know we have several down Route One, one or two plots here and there for resolution or another wars. So with that, the first thing he did is show the respect. So thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? So, you know, when I first got the emails, you know, a few weeks back about, you know, everybody that didn't want it, that a lot of the people from Huntington Woods was opposed, and I said, you know, this isn't going to, when pigs fly, this will work, right? But anyway, I'm glad it came to fruition, and you guys are true gentlemen. And so, motion to close the public hearing. Are we in, not in the public hearing? Okay. Counselor?
Thank you. I'd like to make three conditions upon this special permit. The smoker will be outs, excuse me, the smoker will be inside the building rather than outside the building. The refrigeration unit will be installed in the gravel area at the rear of the building to the left of the drive-through. And the hours of operation will be 6:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. Monday through Saturday, and 6:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. on Sunday. I'd like to move to approve the application from the Big Pig Barbecue and Catering Incorporated for a special permit to allow for catering business with drive-through on property located at 108 Newberry Street, Peabody, Mass., as filed in accordance with Sections 4.2.5, 6.1, and 15.7 of the Peabody zoning ordinance. So move.
With those conditions.
With those three stated conditions, correct.
On the motion, roll call.
Counselors Manning Martin?
Yes.
Garabedian?
Yes.
LaBelle?
Yes.
Turco?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
McGinn?
Yes.
Walsh?
Yes.
Metzulis?
Yes.
Charis?
Yes.
Sassla?
Yes.
Motion carries ten to nothing. One hundred.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselors. Thanks, Joel. Thanks so much.
Counselors, if you look at your agenda, once again, to help move some people out of here who don't need to be here, we're going to go to no objections to Item 4E, entertainment license for Metro Bowl. No objections. Counselor McGinn?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to move to continue the public hearing. And on the motion, we have a request to have a neighbor meeting, so this continuance will allow time to facilitate that neighbor meeting, and the applicant is willing, more than willing, to accommodate that continuance.
You heard the motion and the objections in the motion. We assess that 4E.
Continuance.
Counselor, would you want to continue that to the next scheduled meeting, which I believe is in August 17th?
Yes, correct.
So continue to August 17th. So anybody who's here for Metro Bowl, we're going to continue that to August 17th. We won't be hearing that tonight, based upon you having a neighborhood meeting. Counselor McGinn will be heading up. One piece of business, this meeting is being televised live on cable, Channel Nine, and being taped by PBD Access TV, and also being recorded by a city council stenographer. Item 4C, zoning amendment. Does the city clerk would read the proposed zoning amendment?
Notice hereby given that the city council, the city PBD, will conduct a public hearing on Tuesday evening, July 18, 2017, at 7:30 p.m. in the Franco-Weggen Auditorium, City Hall, 24 Lowell Street, Peabody, Mass., in accordance with the provisions of Chapter 48, Section 5 of the Massachusetts General Laws, to consider amending the zoning ordinance of the city PBD as follows. Be it ordained by the city council, the city PBD as follows, Section 1, that the zoning ordinance of the city PBD entitled, City PBD zoning ordinance adopted April 28, 2011, and amended through December 8, 2016, is hereby further amended as follows, to amend Section 15, entitled Administration, by adding a new Section 13, entitled Construction Hours, as follows. No construction activities on a building permit shall start prior to or after the hours listed below. Monday through Friday, 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Saturdays, 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Sundays, federally and state holiday work shall be requested in writing and shall be approved at the discretion of the Building Commissioner. Section 2, all ordinances, apparts of ordinances inconsistent here with or hereby repealed. Section 3 of this ordinance shall take effect as provided by law of Peabody. City Council Counselor Joel D. Sassla, City Council President.
Thank you. Counselor Turco, would you kind of present and open this up for us, please?
I would love to, Mr. President. I move to receive Item 8K. It's a late communication, I'm, excuse me, it's not a late communication.
For the motion, all in favor, opposed? The vote?
Mr. President, as you all know, and we've discussed in the past, it's construction hours, which are currently not addressed in our zoning. And I would like to address, I did attend the planning board meeting on Thursday, which references, which Item 8K references, and that was to, a recommendation to not adopt this. And their reasoning, and they asked me if I would share this with the council, even though I do disagree, was that they thought the Saturday hours were too restrictive. They wanted to allow contractors to work at 7:00 a.m. There was also some discussion of allowing, opening up Sundays for construction. They, they kind of stepped away from the Sunday, but still, they agree that we should have this in the ordinance, but do not agree with the 7:00 a.m. I respectfully disagree with their opinion. I think that 9:00 a.m. is more than sufficient and fair. And again, it's, it's, this is such a liberal document here as far as even, even leaving this open to the discretion of the Building Commissioner. If there were a situation where somebody needed to begin early, and, you know, the Building Commissioner needed to approve that, it would be a simple, done at the counter with the Building Commissioner, and then notification to the, the city council or the ward council in question. So I would, I'll open it up for discussion before I move to approve, but if anybody would like to discuss.
Before I open up the councils, I might have invited anyone from the public if they'd like to speak about it? Anybody from the public like to comment on this? If you, please come, state your name and state whether you're in favor or opposed. Thank you.
My name's George Smith. I live at 83 Bartholomew Street. This is kind of a passionate thing for me. I have been on John about this, work hours, for a long time. My question on this one, there, I do have a couple. Will this supersede the hours that are stated in the subdivision rules? Will these hours supersede the hours that are stated under subdivision rules? I guess nobody has an answer for that one.
I will, through you, Mr. President, to Mr. Smith. And for, for the council, Mr. Smith has informed me of a Form T, which we've actually discussed in the past, which is typically included with subdivision plans, and is a separate set of hours set forth in the state zoning. Those hours are actually more restrictive than what we've put forth, which is Mr. Smith's concerns, that we're lessening the restriction by the state. That is not the case. I've been told, I don't have a city solicitor here for a legal opinion, and I'm not a lawyer, but, oh, do we have a city solicitor? That state law supersedes city ordinance. And if, if I may put Counselor Smizinski on the spot, if, Mike, if you could answer that question for us, I would greatly appreciate it.
Counselor, could you just, on deference to Counselor Smizinski, could you just state the question, in case you didn't hear a hundred percent of what, what you're looking for? What type of advice, opinion?
I, I will. Mr. Chairman, through you to Counselor Smizinski, the question is, Form T, which is generally included in subdivision construction plans, is more restrictive than the ordinance that we're putting forth tonight for construction hours. Will, are less restrictive hours supersede Form T, or will Form T still be the superior document?
If the obligations were undertaken before the change in the ordinance, then the form will take precedence. So I, I'm guessing you're relating to a particular project in that general neighborhood area of Mr. Smith? And, go ahead.
Through you, to Counselor Smizinski. No, just, Form T, like I said, is a state, it's in the state building code, and included with subdivision plans. So what I don't want to do is, is pass our own ordinance and make Form T null and void, because it is more restrictive in the subdivision end. And that's Mr. Smith's concern, is that we actually...
People who are operating under an existing subdivision approval that include those restrictions are going to stay with those restrictions, notwithstanding what you do on this local ordinance.
Thank you.
Okay, so that kind of takes care of that one. The other thing is enforcement. It's an ongoing battle in this particular city with contractors and developers and anybody that's doing work on a building, to get them to comply with working at decent hours. It's almost impossible. Nobody takes responsibility. You call the police department, they'd say, "Well, it's not our responsibility, we're not supposed to police them." You call, you can't call the building because, building inspectors, because they go home at 5:00 o'clock in the afternoon. You call your counselor, and the only thing he can do is file a complaint or file something the following day. In the meantime, people have to put up with people that violate these ordinances. What are we going to do about enforcement? I see nothing there that says there's going to be somebody take responsible, the responsibility to enforce it.
Mr. President, through you to Mr. Smith. Two things. First, I did speak to, George and I spoke on the phone, was it on the phone or via email a couple days ago? And I did speak to Al Tellarico, and Al stated to me that he can fine people for violation of these hours, and it's all-encompassing. He can write fines under the building code in the city of Peabody. And as far as enforcement goes, as most, most people here know, is recently, there was a position approved in this year's budget, which is a code enforcement officer. And again, I think some people have kind of labeled that as somebody that tells us to turn off our water, and that wasn't the intention. I think the intention is exactly this, to have maybe earlier start times in our building inspectors and, or even weekend hours, where we can get some enforcement if this issue arises, and residents like George, you know, call one of us and find a violation, that we have somebody to address it. So it will be addressed.
All right, thank you.
Anybody else like to speak in favor and opposition? Please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
My name is Russell Donovan, 12 Queer Road. I too was at the planning board meeting Thursday night. And as Judge, Mr. Smith said, enforcement is a key. Obviously, we're here before the city council because there is a need. We've had construction hours, and one of the points I tried to make at the planning board is that you're assuming a lot of people pull permits for construction. I believe a lot of construction is done without a permit. And one of the enforcements that is proposed here is to give the power or the strength for weekends, at least to have the police force, be having ordinance that they can enforce when City Hall is closed. Many, many times I've called, as you all know, and City Hall is closed Saturday and Sunday, Friday at 12:30, and work goes on Saturday and Sunday, whether they're permitted or not, whether they put up a permit sign on that window, work goes on, and the neighbors have to put up with it. The ordinance is here for a purpose and a reason. I suggest the city council do their due diligence and help the neighbors to enforce peace and quiet on the weekends, and have some control of what's going on in Peabody on the weekends. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public would like to speak? Counsel Walsh?
Thank you, Mr. President. I, yeah, just wanted to express the concerns that I've had all along with this. You know, I, I think the work on this is, is commendable, but I still have concerns about the private resident. And we're restricting that person, that individual, from doing any work on his or her home after 6:00 p.m. on the weekdays. A lot of people work all day, and if they're, they're doing a rehab of a kitchen or a bathroom or anything else, you're restricting, you're restricting them from coming home and working on your house in the evening. And in a lot of those cases, they're probably not disturbing the neighbors. I mean, if, if, you know, there are cases when you probably are using equipment that makes a lot of noise. But I, I just think this is still too restrictive for that, that private resident. I understand for the contractors that we're trying to limit the hours of operation for new subdivisions or major construction, but I still think this doesn't do enough to protect the average resident who wants to do some... the average resident who wants to do some small improvements on their homes. Just want to put that out there.
Council Sinowitz?
Thank you, Mr. President. So I do support this, and for a number of reasons. And I don't understand, I'm trying to understand the logic of why the planning board would want to have hours of operation in a residential neighborhood for a subdivision at 7:00 in the morning on a Saturday. I think, if I was reading into what they were thinking, maybe it's about commercial development, commercial building. If someone's building in a satirical park, build away. You know, it's in an industrial park. But there's been many developments in this city, and as Mr. Smith said, no one knows what the hours of operations are. And now I'm told by one of the planning board members that, you know, when you do a subdivision, there's so many issues that come into play. And I'm not talking about building, putting windows in somebody's house on a weekend, replacing a slider, putting a roof on somebody's house. This is building multiple homes. And now I'm being told that they're not going to address truck routes. So I have one coming up, that it's not off, it's not Antonio Drive, where kids play in the middle of Linfield Street, and they just pull off onto Antonio Drive, and they build their houses and they screw. Now I got people who are going to weave, flatbeds, 18-wheelers, all the way through our residential neighborhoods, and they don't feel that they want to be able to control the truck routes. They're not going to approve it. So I have to come up with an order of conditions, which is another whole part of that, but I'm not sure where they're coming from when they're trying to limit some of these things. We certainly don't want to tell any homeowner not to replace or work on his house at any time. And that's not my intention of this. For me, this is about subdivisions and controlling hours of operation, truck routes, street sweeping, rock crushing, all the nonsense that goes in, that the people who live in those neighborhoods have to suffer with for four to five years when you have a large project like that. So I'll support it. And the building inspector, if somebody has a complaint, can go to Al and say, "Listen, I want to work Sunday. I got to replace a couple of windows on my deck." Can I, you know, if a neighbor is complaining. And I don't see that as, but also make sure they pull a permit. So I will support it, and we'll have to get more into this, what the role is of the planning board. Is the role of the planning board, "Oh, yeah, I got 20,000 square foot lot, that's great. Your utility's underground, wow, that's great also. You're going to have granite curbs, wow, that's awesome." What about everything that goes into building that subdivision, and all the issues that the city? We just paved all those streets, and now for four years to five years, they're going to run trucks all over them? Great. Are they going to have to repave those streets at the end of the five years? Are they going to carry that bond out for five years? So I want them to build the best subdivisions they can, make a lot of money, this America, make a lot of money, but just be respectful, because I see the situation up on Antonio Drive with the grass that's six feet high by Mr. Croupy, that he won't mow a lawn. So I know what's coming. If he won't mow a lawn for 30 bucks and have somebody out there mowing it, I know where this is going. So we can do it like, so, I'm digressing. So let's go back to hours of operations. I'm with you. So we'll get into the other stuff later. Thank you.
Council Turco?
Mr. President, just through you to Council Walsh, Representative Walsh. It's almost like, because I went through this with the planning board round and round, and it's almost like nobody reads that last line. And the last line, and this is why I say this is liberal, if it was me, I would actually strike the last line, but through, at your behest, Representative Walsh, when we first discussed this, you would voice your concern. And the last line says, "Sunday and holiday work shall be requested in writing and shall be approved at the discretion of the building commissioner." And when he said, and I talked to Al about that, and Al actually wrote that, and he said that it wouldn't be something that cost anybody any time. It would be written at the counter when they came in to pull their building permits and said, "I need to put in a slider this Saturday and Sunday." And then Al would just put that in writing, that you're going to be doing it on Sunday, July 18th, or whatever it is. And he would approve that. He would have that ability, if it came into question, to send that out to a ward council or the city council, or a resident that had a complaint about work being done. He just wanted to have, so in no way does this limit any homeowner from doing that. And he said, you know, and I know that years down the road, things can get lost in translation, so I'm glad that we're having this discussion, and it's in a public forum. It's in no way the intention of this document to do that, and I don't think it does, and I think it leaves a giant hole here that can be filled, but through the building commissioner's authority. Thank you.
Council Gravel?
Yeah, I was, Monday through Friday, 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. seems fine to me. And, you know, I look at this, and on the one hand, you look at it from a business's perspective, and it can be somewhat restrictive on Saturdays and Sundays, but don't the residents have some rights to? I mean, come down to, and I can't even imagine what it sounds like, four or five streets over from me, but come down to my house at quarter to six, 7:00 in the morning, and listen to them pounding stone. And I swear they start earlier and earlier, and you just hear them, the stone breakers are out there, bang, 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 you know, and then you hear the trucks start up, and, I mean, you know, on the one hand, I feel for the fact that the people have to make a living, but in the same vein, I think asking for a little bit of peace and quiet for the residents is not a big thing when those construction projects are going to come and go, and those residents are left with, you know, during that period of time, all of that aggravation. I just find it to be, I was really kind of surprised, we didn't have any restrictions on the time. That kind of explains to me why on Bartholomew Street, sometimes they start, it looks like, it sounds like they start at 6:30 in the morning. And that's pretty early to be listening to some banging and some trucks when you live there. So I don't have a problem supporting this, and it does have that out clause, that if somebody's got a special circumstance, where they're dealing with a deadline and a timeframe, and, you know, they got to get this thing in, that they can go to the building inspector and ask for special permission. I don't think you could ever write an ordinance that's going to cover every potential situation that you're ever going to run into. It's impossible, because there's always going to be one other variation. I think this gives us at least the open end to be able to make some changes if we want to, and leave it alone if not. So, thank you.
Council Charis?
Thank you. Again, the fact that we didn't have anything on the books of ordinance kind of blew me away. To be able to prevent somebody who lives right next door, starting so early in the morning, going all the way into the evening until, you know, they're setting up lights to work, and someone at home has a new baby, is trying to put them asleep, it's a quality of life. And the fact that they can ask for extended hours through the building commissioner is great there. And I think the language in here is for construction that is permitted. So if somebody is fixing their shed, or fixing their deck, they don't have a permit out for that, because they're just maintaining and fixing it, you know, it protects them. Again, and I think part of it, for me, it's great, because now it limits how much work I have to do at home, and I have a, you know, excuse to my wife that I can't work all the way into the night. So I am going to support this, I think, as a start. It's great for the quality of life of neighbors. And again, if people need to get an extra time, because they know they can only do it on a Saturday, Sunday, putting a window in or a door, usually they have their next-door neighbors helping them anyways. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel.
I'd just like to make a couple of quick comments. To the resident who spoke about things that don't get done, and things that don't happen, I can definitely empathize with that. I will suggest this, that, you know, I think we're getting to that point where basically, you know, 99% of the population has cell phones. If you see a violation, take a picture. That picture's usually timestamped, date stamped, and I do believe we're moving in the right direction with the new compliance code enforcement officer, that that type of information will be powerful. And I do believe that as that job description is put together and comes to us, that specifically, I know I can speak on my behalf, that the reason why I supported that is so that that person does work hours that aren't, City Hall isn't typically open, or you can't get in touch with a building inspector. So I think we're moving in the right direction, and I think the citizens will see that. And I will share one story, where I had, just about two weeks ago, I had a business owner who lives in PBD, lives in PBD, and they complained about a neighbor who, maybe retired contractor, just seems to have a lot of tools, let's just put it that way. But this is a budding neighbor, and he can't get any relief. And so now at least I said to him, you know, wait a couple of weeks, we're trying to craft something that'll help you with that, and now I can call him up and say, "Here's the relief." Now, I can't guarantee you that your neighbor's not going to break the rules or whatever, but this is in the books, this is an ordinance, and you know that, you know, on Saturday after 6:00, you're entitled to some peace. So as Council Gravel said, I think it's a move in the right direction, and I think it's, I think it's just a, it's long overdue, and I thank you for carrying the torch in this, Council Turco, and for those reasons, I will be supporting it.
Counsel McGinn?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just threw you to Council Turco. Council Turco, did we get 8K? I know you made reference to it.
I'm sorry?
Did you get 8K?
8K, I did receive 8K, yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Council Turco, would you like to make a motion to adopt?
Mr. President, move...
Close the public hearing first. Motion to close, if you could.
Move to close the public hearing, Mr. President.
Thank you. All in favor, any opposed, a vote? Council Turco?
Mr. President, move to amend Section 15, entitled administrative administration, by adding, "Adieu, Section 13, entitled construction hours as follows. No construction activities on a building permit shall start prior to or after the hours listed below. Monday through Friday, 7:00 a.m., 6:00 p.m. Saturdays, 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Sundays, federal and state holidays. Work shall be requested in writing and shall be approved at the discretion of the building commissioner and as advertised." Thank you.
Adopted as advertised. All right, good. Any discussion, roll call, vote?
Councilors Manning, Martin?
No.
Garabedian?
Yes.
Gravel?
Yes.
Turco?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
McGinn?
Yes.
Walsh?
No.
Mazzullis?
No.
Charis?
Yes.
Sinowitz?
Yes.
Saslaw?
Yes.
Motion carries 8 to 3.
Thank you. Item 4D, zoning amendment, Section 11 dot 6, proposed permanent moratorium on billboards.
Notice hereby given that the city council, the city PBD, will conduct a public hearing on Tuesday evening, July 18, 2017, at 7:30 p.m. in the Franka Wigan Auditorium, City Hall, 24 Loos, PBD Mass. In accordance with the provisions of Chapter 48, Section 5 of the Massachusetts General Laws, to consider amending these zoning ordinance of the city PBD as follows, be ordained by the city council, the city PBD as follows. Section 1, that the zoning ordinance of the city PBD entitled City PBD zoning ordinance, adopted April 28, 2011, and amended through December 8, 2016, is hereby further amended as follows. One, by repealing in its entirety Section 11.6, entitled Billboards. Two, by amending Section 11.8, entitled Prohibited Signs, by adding the following two new subsections. Subsection L, any static or digital billboard. Subsection M, any additional face to an existing billboard, billboard structure, or billboard monopole. Section 2, all ordinances or parts of ordinances inconsistent herewith are hereby repealed. Section 3, this ordinance shall take effect as provided by law. City Council Councilor Joel D. Saslaw, City Council President.
Fellow counselors, you've heard the proposed amendment to the zoning ordinance, city of PBD. I'll open it up to anybody on the floor. Counsel Walsh?
Thank you, Mr. President. Under suspension of the rules, I'd like to receive Item 8E.
Heard the motion. All in favor, any opposed, a vote?
And also, Mr. President, just, you know, my feelings on this, we've been working on this for a while. We had a moratorium and extended that. I think there would be another year on that, but I think it's important that we move forward with this, which will prohibit any additional applications for our billboards from now until infinity. How's that? But I think this is an important step and the right thing to do.
Thank you, Counsel Walsh. Any other counselors? Any from the public like to speak? In favor and opposition? Counsel Walsh?
I would move to close a public hearing, Mr. President.
Motion, all in favor, any opposed, a vote? Counsel Walsh?
Mr. President, I would move that the city council, the city of PBD, adopt the zoning proposal. Do you need me to read this, Mr. President? Okay. Section 1, zoning ordinance of the city of PBD, entitled the city of PBD zoning ordinance, adopted April 28, 2011, and amended through December 8, 2016, is hereby further amended as follows. By repealing in its entirety Section 11.6, entitled Billboards. By amending Section 11.8, entitled Prohibited Signs, by adding the following two subsections. Item L, any static or digital billboard. Item M, any additional face to an existing billboard, billboard structure, or billboard monopole. Section 2, all ordinances or parts of ordinances inconsistent herewith are hereby repealed. And Section 3, this ordinance shall take effect as provided by law. So moved.
Thank you, Counsel Walsh. Any discussion on the motion? Roll call, vote?
Councilors Manning, Martin?
Yes.
Garabedian?
Yes.
Gravel?
Yes.
Turco?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
McGinn?
Yes.
Walsh?
Yes.
Mazzullis?
Yes.
Charis?
Yes.
Sinowitz?
Yes.
Saslaw?
Yes.
Motion carries 11 to 11.
We are on Item 4F, entertainment license for Haven's Taste Steakhouse Incorporated, 150 Main Street. The court, please read the public notice.
Notice hereby given that the city council of the city PBD will conduct a public hearing on Tuesday evening, July 18, 2017, at 7:30 p.m. in the Franka Wigan Auditorium, City Hall, 24 Loos, PBD Mass, on the application from Haven's Taste Steakhouse, Inc., 150 Main Street, PBD Mass, requesting an entertainment license to allow for non-live entertainment, specifically television and digital internet music, and live entertainment, specifically karaoke and live music, at said 150 Main Street, PBD Mass. PBD City Council Councilor Joel D. Saslaw, City Council President.
Thank you. Is the petitioner in hand? Please approach the podium and state your name and address for the record, and tell us what you'd like to do.
My name is Monica Condi, and I reside at 25 Sprague Street in PBD Mass. And I just want an entertainment license for, as explained, just for live entertainment on Thursdays, Fridays, and Saturdays, or to do karaoke, stuff like that.
Thank you. Counsel McGinn? Excuse me. Anyone like to speak in favor of the petitioner? Anybody like to speak in favor of the petitioner? Anyone like to speak in opposition? Anybody like to speak in opposition? There being none, Counsel McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have met with the applicant. They, as indicated, they intend to offer some entertainment, and in the case of live entertainment, just occasionally in the form of ambient music in the restaurant for their patrons. I've not been made aware of any neighbor concerns on this, and I intend to support the application. I'd open it up to other counselors.
Fellow counselors? Counsel, Ann Manning, Martin?
Just a quick question, through you to Counsel McGinn. Where is this?
It's across the street from McDonald's.
That's what I thought. Thank you.
Counsel Gould?
I had the same question. Thank you.
Counsel, the only question I had on the application is, I did see hours of live entertainment from 8:00 p.m. to 1:00 a.m.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President, for bringing that up. That's, through the discussion with the applicant, we're going to change that to midnight on the live entertainment, and it's Thursday through Saturday. They want the, for the non-live entertainment... it's Thursday through Saturday. They want the, for the non-live entertainment, that will be other days of the week as well, but it's actually gonna be midnight, and I'll stipulate that in the motion.
Thank you, Counsel.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to close the public hearing.
You've heard the motion. All in favor, any opposed, a vote?
And just for the benefit of the applicant, before I make this motion, there was a input from the fire department on this, that it's gonna require an up-to-date inspection report for sprinkler and fire alarm systems, so if you could just please make a point to contact the fire department on that issue, that would be great. And I'd like to move to approve the application from Heaven Taste Steakhouse, Inc., 150 Main Street, PBD Mass, requesting entertainment license to allow for non-live entertainment, specifically television and digital internet music, and live entertainment, specifically karaoke and live music, at said 150 Main Street, PBD Mass. Hours of non-live entertainment, 11:00 AM to 12:00 AM, hours of live entertainment, 8:00 PM to 12:00 AM, Thursday through Saturday, in accordance with the application, live entertainment will not include DJ, and the number of musicians and amplifier is one each. So moved.
You've heard the motion. Roll call, vote?
Counselors Manning, Martin?
Yes.
Garabedian?
Yes.
Gravel?
Yes.
Turco?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
McGinn?
Yes.
Walsh?
Yes.
Mazzullis?
Yes.
Charis?
Yes.
Sinowitz?
Yes.
Saslaw?
Yes.
Motion carries 11 to none.
Item 4G, special permit, A&amp;M Realty Group LLC, 5 Elm Street. The Court could read the public notice?
Notice hereby given that the City Council of the City PBD, acting as a special permit granting authority, will conduct a public hearing on Tuesday evening, July 18, 2017, at 7:30 PM in the Franka Wigan Auditorium, City Hall 24 Loos, PBD Mass, on the application from A&amp;M Realty Group LLC, 85 Main Street, PBD Mass, for a special permit to allow for four residential units, two two-bedroom units and two one-bedroom units, all within the existing building located at 5 Elm Street, PBD Mass, as filed in accordance with Sections 4.2.1, 6.1, and 15.7 of the PBD zoning ordinance. PBD City Council Councilor Joel D. Saslaw, City Council President.
Thank you, Counsel.
Good evening. For the record, my name's Ethan Von Zalidis. I'm an attorney practicing law at 246 Annover Street in PBD, and I am here on behalf of the petitioner with respect to this evening's application. Does this thing, you gotta, I have to yell? I'll yell. I think that most of the counselors are probably familiar with this property on Elm Street. We have a three-story building. It contains about 5,400 square feet of area. It's situated on a lot that contains 5,250 square feet, and we are situated in the B.C. zoning district. The building was last used for the sale of medical supplies. Prior to that, I think it was retail, maybe leather store, and then prior to that, if my memory serves me correctly, I think for decades it was utilized as Maestrellis's funeral home. And the petitioner has this property under a purchase and sales agreement. Obviously, it's contingent upon obtaining the requested special permit. The petitioner is also the owner of the abutting property that's at 43 Central Street, previously known as the Courthouse Pub and Restaurant Building. And I believe it was in December of 2015, I obtained a special permit to convert that business use into residential apartments, so that the entire building would then be residential. And basically, that's what my client wants to do with the property at 5 Elm Street. As it's set forth in the application, he desires to convert this building into four residential apartments. The first floor would contain two one-bedroom apartments. The second floor would contain one two-bedroom apartment, and the third floor would also contain one two-bedroom apartment. If granted the permit, he's gonna obviously rehab and revamp the exterior of the building. We're gonna be removing any commercial windows and replacing them with more residential styled windows. We're gonna be removing the existing commercial signage, the awnings. There's a large, I don't know what you'd call it, ramp that's in the front of the building that we'll also be removing. We'll be repaving the rear parking area. We'll be installing a new roof, and we'll be redoing the front landscaping, and all of these improvements are intended to enhance the appearance of the property. As I stated earlier, my client does own the abutting property at 43 Central Street. That property has 14 parking spaces. The property at, on Elm Street has four, which gives us a total of 18. And under our revised zoning ordinance, we require 12 parking spaces, which gives us six additional spaces which can be used as visitor parking. All the work that's required to be done for this project, we've done within the interior of the building, meaning that we don't need to expand the building envelope. All of our secondary means of access and egress to the apartments will be within the existing building. In addition to performing the interior renovations necessary for making them apartments, being new walls, ceilings, floors, installing the kitchens and bathrooms, we'll also be installing all-new wiring and all-new plumbing wherever it's required, so that those utilities are brought up to today's building codes. We're also gonna be installing a sprinkler system throughout the entire building, along with a new fire alarm system, so that too will also be in compliance with today's fire code regulations. If the permit is granted, I think this would result in the removal of the last business use that you'll find on Elm Street, so that the proposal will be compatible with the rest of the Elm Street neighborhood. I do have the owner with me, or the petitioner with me this evening, Mr. Barry Hobie, and together we'll try to answer any questions that either the counsel or the public may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Anybody like to speak in favor of the plan? Anybody like to speak in favor? Please state your name and address for the record. Thank you.
Thank you. Rosa Di Tucci, 31 to 37 Central Street. I'm a little, I'm a lot in favor, and I have just a couple of concerns, so hopefully I can address them both under the same umbrella. One of, first of all, I'm so happy, and thank you very much for converting that pub into residential units. It's an improvement. We were here a few years ago to talk about that, so very glad to hear that someone was looking to turn this existing, I saw the one we have now, into, again, nice residential units. My concern, however, is the dreaded P-word. I know that you probably hear this with every single application, and that's parking. There are 26 parking spaces, I just heard, combined between the two properties. And if you drive down Elm, I'm sorry, Elm Place, you'll see that the four parking spaces, I think there might actually be six marked out, are right on the side of the building, and they're angled parking. So when cars park there, they're literally in the middle of the lane. So, I would love it, and I think it would be much safer if the petitioner would be willing to say that he would take that parking off of the side street. The building's pretty much, you know, it's very close to the street. It was built a long time ago. Setbacks weren't what they are now. And it does present a hazard. There have been many times when I've tried to come down Elm Place, and a large truck or something was literally, you know, halfway, halfway in the middle of the street. It's very difficult during the wintertime. So, I would ask the petitioner to please consider, since he does have six additional parking spaces, if he would combine the parking, if it's allowed under the city's zoning and ordinances, and get that parking off of the street. I think that would be, first of all, it would look so much better, but secondly, it really is a safety concern. So, and I think, I think that's it. So, I wish him luck, and I hope that he does as good a job with this as he did with the other, and I do sincerely hope that both he and this council will consider the request to help us with that parking situation. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak in favor of the petitioner? In favor? Anyone like to speak in opposition? Petitioner. Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, City Council. My name is John Janarski. I'm the property owner of 31, 33, 35, 37 Central Street. My family has lived, and I grew up in PBD, at 40 Central Street for over 70 years. Great job at the Courthouse Pub, 43 Central. I have concerns about that property over at Elm Street. I have been inside of that property. It's a hollow shell. I don't think we have the square footage in there to make a four unit. I've spoken with residents behind on Elm Place. They have also expressed concerns to me. I don't think any one of them are here, unfortunately, this evening. The demographics of that whole neighborhood are some one families, mostly two, a few three. I think everybody that I've spoken to at Elm Place feels that three units there, I guess could fit into the neighborhood. Four units, I don't see how you can do it. I think you all need to really go by there, visit it, see how the parking is situated. Right now, with those four spots that are on the Elm Place side, you can't get down a one-way road there because the rear ends of the cars are out to the street. The lot out front, when we went and saw it this evening, I come by there every couple of days, the whole lot down below was full. I think it would be difficult to try to put a four unit there. I really don't see how you can, you know, plan it out. But at this point, I think, you know, we would be comfortable with three units in the neighborhood, and the folks at Elm Place that live there, property owners would feel the same if you speak to them. Four units, I think, would be a hindrance to the neighbors in the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak in opposition to the petitioner? In opposition to the petitioner? Counsel, we're sourced.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To the neighbors, I'm glad that you're happy about what we did with the Courthouse Pub. And one of the reasons we did that, so that we could get rid of the traffic and the problems that they were having the late hours, and turned it into two units that would conform with the neighborhood. And I hear that you're all happy with that. Now, I usually give my age away when I start talking, so the property we're talking about was built in the early 1900s. That was Maestrellis's funeral parlor. It was built to be a funeral parlor. And there were many, many funeral parlors that size at the time. At the time, you had a huge Greek population that extended from Elm Street down to Malvern and Street. And you also had a big Polish community also, and also you had a Russian funeral parlor in that area. I'm only giving you a little history here, because these properties were built before zoning was in existence. And right now, we have a non-conforming use. It was an old funeral parlor. It turned into other businesses when the Greeks left the neighborhood. They either married off and went wherever they did, the same as the Polish and the Russian people did also. And I was gonna say a joke, all us Greeks married Irish. Now, we go to Conway's. My friend Tom's over here, so. I didn't think that would go over, so I take it back. But anyways, yeah, too late. But I go by that street almost on a daily basis. I see the businesses that were there. I've seen the traffic problems that the existing building does have there. And one of the reasons I'm telling you that is because I am gonna support this project, and I'm gonna tell you why. First of all, that's the only business left in a residential neighborhood. It's an opportunity to get that entire street to be residential, and I think that's a big plus for the neighborhood. And as far as the parking goes, I'll get to that in a minute. One of the concerns I do have, and the attorney did address it, the fire department wanted the area sprinkled, and you are gonna address that, am I correct? Yeah, okay. Ethan? Ethan, are you done? Are you done? Okay.
I'm done.
Do you want to address the traffic concern that the woman had?
Yes, yes, I will. With our application, we submitted a parking plan. And those four spaces on the left side of the building that are on Elm Place, we're deleting. We don't wanna use them. We agree with the neighbors that, you know, it's not a safe condition because Elm Place is a pretty narrow roadway. So, those four spaces have been relocated to the rear of the building.
Okay. And you have adequate park, and I did see the plan. You do have adequate parking?
Yep.
Okay. And one of the, another reason I'm gonna support this plan is because if the attorney was honest with me, which I'm sure he was, that if I, originally, when he came to me, I said, I'm only gonna allow you three units because that's what you have on that street. And he said that this project could not be done without four units. Now, I'm gonna ask you, is that true? Okay. I wanted to hear it from you. Okay.
The reason is, is if you look at the floor plans that we submitted with the application, the way the existing building is, you come through the door, and there's a main staircase that feeds, you know, first floor, second floor, third floor. And if you tried to make the first floor just one apartment, it's gonna be totally unmarketable because you end up horseshoe. You know, you're gonna have one side of the apartment over here and one way over here. And the only way to make it feasible was to divide it into two. And they're two small apartments.
Okay. So, if we deny this, this is gonna continue being a, whatever kind of business, whoever owns the property is gonna wanna put in there. So, this, I believe, is an opportunity to get that whole street to conform with the neighborhood. And I think it's the right move to make, and I know my ward, so I'm just putting it out there to let you know I'm in favor of it. I'll let your counselor speak.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel Ian Manning, Martin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm in favor of this as well. First of all, people need housing, so these are small units, and people that like to, there are single people that need affordable, small units. We need housing. That's number one. Number two is, if the building is in such of a shell or in state of disrepair, it's going to take a lot of money to rehab it, and you need to allow the owner to make a profit, make their money back. I mean, that's, this is, America, this is business, and this is why he's doing what he's doing. So, it is beneficial for him to put in four units. That's the only way he's gonna be able to pay for rehabbing that building. In addition, you have to put sprinklers in because you're going up to four units, right? So, that is a colossal amount of money to pay for putting sprinklers in. So, this is no small feat. It will improve the area. I concur with the ward counselor. And they, really, the parking situation, I don't see any sticking point here. I think they've got that covered, and I think it'll be a good project. I think it'll be good for the area, and I support the project as well as the ward counselor. Thank you.
Counsel Charis?
Thank you. It's nice when you have a resident come up and speak in favor of a last project you did, you know, it's a great thing. And when I'm looking at the plot plans, they're pretty good-sized apartments for one and two bedrooms, you know, some decent-sized rooms. Curiosity, what would- Curiosity, what would a one-bedroom rental go for? What's your range you're looking at? And for a two-bedroom?
Gary Hobie, A&amp;M Realty Group, 5 Elm Street. We anticipate the rents to be anywhere from sixteen hundred to two thousand.
And that's sixteen for the one-bedroom?
We wanna have all hardwood, granite, stainless. It's gonna be... It's not gonna be cheaply, that's for sure.
I applaud you for doing it the right way and bringing it...
We did the same style apartments in the Courthouse Pub and those are getting the same rents.
That's great. Great to hear that, you know, that you're bringing it up to a standard, that we want the quality of life to be good here and to be able to have some, you know, good-quality tenants. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Counselor Turco.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also support this. I think, as Counselor Metzouls says, it's great for the neighborhood to make this all residential. I just had one question. Behind that, and it's for my own curiosity, behind that property, it seems, via the picture that Counselor Gravel just showed me, there's a carport, five carports? Is that part of your property? No? No? Okay. Must be a separate property in the rear. Thank you.
Counselor Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wanna congratulate Mr. Hobie on a fine job he did with the Courthouse Pub property. As you can hear, the accolades. You did a nice job there, Mr. Hobie, and I wish you well on this next project. Thank you.
Counselor Sinewitz.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to the petitioner, how many units are in the Courthouse Pub? I don't remember.
There are five. There was three before the project and when we did the pub, we added two.
So... And I did look at the plans. There will be a bathroom in every unit. There are not a rooming, they're not sharing bathrooms.
Two of the units have two bathrooms.
Okay. And just on the parking, so is this a shared... The lot behind the Courthouse Pub, I'm looking at this map, that's gonna be your parking for that property also? So you have five units there, four units there is nine. And how many total spaces you got?
We have about eighteen total spaces.
Okay. So I'm assuming for that type of rent, you're probably gonna have two people living there because it's, you know, sixteen hundred to two thousand a month for rent for an individual. So I'm assuming there are gonna be two. So I expect more cars, probably two per unit. So as long as you have enough parking there, you're accommodating Ms. Rose on that side lot. And it's also a fire hazard, you know, God forbid a fire truck couldn't get back there. So... And I think somebody brought up the point that you are taking out the, you know, commercial use in a residential neighborhood. So good luck.
Counselor Metzouls.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, before I close the public hearing, I just wanna say, because I'm very, very familiar with this and it's sad, I know your rents are gonna be what you said and that sounds like a lot. But the truth is, that's what they're going for everywhere. And it makes... I didn't want someone to say, "Wow, look at what he's charging for rent." Those are the going rates. And that is sad that in the city of Peabody, people are paying eighteen hundred, two thousand dollars a month for rent. It's awful. But, you know, that's just life, you know? And I'm not happy with it, but that's what's going on today. Mr. Chairman, with that, I'd like to close the public hearing. Thank you.
Further motion? All in favor, any opposed, to vote? Counselor Metzouls.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this time, I'd like to approve a special permit for A&amp;M Realty Group LLC doing business at 5 Elm Street for the purpose of allowing four residential units. Two two-bedroom units and two one-bedroom units, all within the existing building. So moved, Mr. Chairman.
You've heard the motion. Any discussion? We'll call vote.
Counselors Manning-Martin?
Yes.
Garibedian?
Yes.
Gravel?
Yes.
Turco?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
McGinn?
Yes.
Walsh?
Yes.
Metzouls?
Yes.
Charis?
Yes.
Sinewitz?
Sosla?
Yes.
Motion carries eleven to nothing.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you very much. Good luck.
Next up on the agenda, item 4H, special permit, North Shore Heritage Associates, 22 Foster Street. Will the clerk please read the public notice?
Notice is hereby given that the City Council of the City of Peabody, acting as a special permit granting authority, will conduct a public hearing on Tuesday evening, July 18, 2017, at 7:30 PM in the Frank Owen Wigan Auditorium, City Hall, 24 Low Street, Peabody, Mass., on the application from North Shore Heritage Association's Northeast Ark, 1 Southside Road, Davis, Mass., for a special permit to allow for a theater, black box theater, with limited function and reception hall, special event venue involving public and private events located at 22 Foster Street, Peabody, Mass., as filed in accordance with sections 4.2.3, 4.2.5, 6.1, and 15.7 of the Peabody zoning ordinance. Peabody City Council, Counselor Joel D. Sosla, City Council President.
Thank you. Counselor?
Thank you. It's been a long night and I appreciate the fact that everybody is kind of hot and wants to get out of here. So I'll try to be as brief and to the point as I possibly can and yet create a record that will support the application. My name is David Anklees. I practice law at 246 Andover Street in Peabody, Massachusetts, and I'm here representing the applicant, North Shore Heritage Associates, Inc., the applicant that owns the parcel of land at 22 Foster Street. The purpose of the application is to establish a black box theater in the rear portion of the old post office building, a black box theater, if you will, consists of a simple, somewhat unadorned, performance space, usually a large square room with black walls and a flat floor. It will be used for comedy, dance, music, film, poetry, theater, and special events, including an improv-based social skills program for youth on the autism spectrum. Hopefully, it will also become an alternate and unique venue for private events for smaller, more intimate groups that will generate rental income, which in turn will help sustain the center. I refer you to the prior press releases issued by Northeast Ark, which I attached to the application. I hope you've had an opportunity to read them. The actual physical work to be done on the exterior of the building is quite limited. I've attached, I think, four-floor plans and exterior plans outlining just the basic work that's going to be done. Please be reminded that that is not a building plan that was intended to be submitted to the building inspector. It doesn't conform to the code, et cetera. Any plan that goes into the building inspector will, of course, be a full-blown architectural, code-conforming plan. This plan, I tried to have as simple as possible so that you could view it, see exactly what the work was that was going to be done on the exterior of the building. That work is very limited. There's a new... If you look at the plans, you'll see a new rooftop HVAC system, which will be added. It will not be close to any abutting residence. It will be properly screened. It will be properly blocked so that any sound emanating from that system is going to be very limited. The large fan on Summer Street that currently exists, it ventilates the large building to the rear, is going to be removed along with the stairway that comes out of the building on Summer Street. The existing stairways on the other side of the building are to be rebuilt for safety purposes. And what we call goose-necked sconce lighting will be added in the areas of the stairways, the entrances, and the exits. It is indirect lighting. A picture of that type of lighting is on the plans, which are attached to the application. One of the existing garage doors to the rears that serve the post office is going to be removed and that wall is going to be closed off. One garage door is going to remain. The lighting, again, I wanna emphasize, is indirect. It's going to be focused on the property and on the stairways, the access and the egress, and will not in any way reflect upon abutting or adjoining properties. The remaining work, which relates to the theater, are all going to be safety improvements and amenities supporting the use of the space. I wanna emphasize that the theater will... The entire area of the theater will receive a soundproofing. I'm not familiar with the material, but those issues are very sensitive. We understand to any of the abutters and the entire area will be soundproofed. I have here with me tonight Ryan McShara, and the architect, and also Matt Gonzalez, who are here to answer any of these technical questions if you have them. I'm not capable of telling you exactly from a technical point of view what that soundproofing Attached to the application also, you'll find another page, which is entitled "Project Details." It was prepared by Susan Ring Brown, the Chief Development Officer of Northeast Ark and her committee. Hopefully, it provides you with any other answers to questions that you may have regarding our use, hours of operation, food and parking. Any food that is going to be consumed on the premises will be served by licensed caterers. The areas used for food prep will be inspected and licensed by the Board of Health. All of these issues relative to the consumption perhaps of alcohol on the premises, if it's a private party, will be addressed through the appropriate licensing boards. And each person having an affair, if there is a private affair there, will be required to hire only licensed people and will be required to obtain whatever licenses are necessary for whatever other entertainment they might have or for consumption of any alcoholic beverages. I've also attached another page describing what a black box theater is. This one, as you can see, has approximately 128 seats. It's not big. It's fairly small. It's intimate. It can be used by almost anybody, local groups, high school. And as I say, it's going to be used by Northeast Ark for those participating in their autism spectrum. Again, Susan has prepared an explanation of what can go on. And I really think it's extensive and I wanna emphasize the fact that we need to have private parties, we need to have other people using the venues so that this becomes self-sustaining, so that we can earn enough money to keep it up and to make it available for people within the city who are interested in performing arts. And rather than repeat what is on the detailed application, I'm gonna leave it that, like that, and address any questions that you might have. Again, Mr. McShara is here and the builder is here, so hopefully, we'll be able to answer any and all questions that you have regarding use and the improvement of the property. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Would anybody like to speak in favor of the project?
Mr. President?
Please come to the mic.
Mr. President? Thank you, Mr. President. If I could ask for your solicit input from the public, I just have a statement I need to read on this matter. If you'd permit me to do that.
Could you hold off one moment? Counselor McGinn?
Thank you, Mr. President. For the record, myself, Counselors Walsh, Gould, and Gravel are Friends of the Black Box Theater and/or donors to the fund that would be used to establish the Black Box Theater. Myself and the other counselors mentioned have filed a disclosure of the appearance of a conflict of interest form and that is on this matter and that is with the city clerk. Myself and the other counselors mentioned have no formal relationship with the applicant and have no financial interest in this endeavor. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you for that disclosure. Public, someone, please state your name and address. Thank you very much.
Pat Tedesco, 28 Jennifer Lane, Peabody. I'm here to speak in favor of it. I recently purchased 1 Main Street and 3 Main Street along with my son. And I've had the pleasure of meeting Susan and going over to the ARC program and seeing what they're doing with the adults that they have in there. I was totally amazed. I'm a donor also. I have autism in my family, excuse me, so it holds a special place for us. So being abutters with them, we're 100% in favor for it. Also, something like that coming down to Peabody with all the ideas we have and all our minds to what Peabody Square could be, I believe that black box, excuse me, would bring people downtown Peabody. And that's, I believe, what we're all looking for. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tedesco, and thank you for investment in Peabody. Anybody else like to speak in favor? Please state your name and address for the record.
I am Joseph Nicotera, 23 Downing Road. I'm a resident of Peabody, Massachusetts, and I also own a theatrical and event lighting company that has donated our services to four or five successful events now at the theater. I also do lighting for a number of small musical productions, everything from concerts to plays, the Christmas concert that we have here every year. And one of the things that I constantly hear from performers in the area is that there's just not a good space to perform. There aren't really many theaters that are artist-centric that would allow that. So having this in downtown Peabody would certainly be a boon to the artistic community. I can already make a list of musicians that would wanna be performing there. So I am completely and utterly in favor of the petition.
Thank you. Anybody else speak in favor? Should make them tell a joke, but go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Ted Neary. I live at 54 Linden Road in Peabody. Most of you know me. I have been involved with the Marblehead Little Theater for about eight years now. And that is proof that the concept of a black box not only is successful, but it will help revitalize downtown Peabody. Some of you have come and have witnessed what this black box can do. And I know everybody hates to say, "Oh, Salem, Salem, Salem." That's proof that small theaters work. That will help, that will revitalize, that will help your investment, I promise. I just... Please support this. A lot of people have put a ton of work, a ton of time, and it can only benefit all of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Neary. Anybody else like to speak in favor?
Good evening. Susan Ring Brown, Chief Development Officer for the Northeast Ark, and my address is 7 Central Court, number three, in Beverly, Massachusetts. I just wanted to say, give a shout-out to other members of the Peabody Cultural Collaborative and the Friends of the Black Box Theater who are here with us this evening in support of the project and to recognize Matt McGavro, who organized a Stage One reunion in support of the project very recently. So we've been very thankful for the outpouring of community support. And Tim Brown is in the polo shirt in the back, my colleague from the ARC, oversees both the Arts Center and Breaking Grounds Cafe down in the square. I know a lot of you have been into exhibits that are held through the years and hope to see you continuing at those exhibits and other activities in the future. And Martha Holden and Chuck, long-term supporters and members of the Cultural Collaborative as well. So anyone else, please raise your hand that I didn't. And you met, I think you know Matt, our builder, and Kurt is a new member of the Cultural Collaborative as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else like to speak in favor? Saying that, I'd like to open up to the counsel. Counsel McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I've had numerous conversations with the applicant and their attorney, as well as with several residential abutters. I would say that the abutters are generally supportive of this use, but they do have concerns, and that is primarily with noise. And that, I have attended events primarily that have happened kind of as fundraisers at the Black Box Theater and have walked around outside and have detected some exterior noise. However, I am very comfortable that the applicant is taking steps in the design with input from the sound engineer, as their attorney has indicated, to establish a sound barrier that will prevent the noise from becoming a nuisance to the neighbors. So I'm comfortable that this is not going to become a problem and that there will be good neighbors in this location. There was, you might notice in your packet, there was some additional input from the fire department. I don't think that really needs to be conditioned on the special permit as it will be addressed in the building permit process. I'm a believer in this. I think it will be beneficial to the area, and I am supportive of the application. I turn it over to other counselors for comments. Thank you.
Counsel, did you receive Item 8I?
Yeah, in suspension of the rules, moved to receive Item 8I, so moved.
Thank you. Any votes in favor to vote? Thank you very much. Counsel Gravel?
Thank you very much, Council President. First of all, I appreciate you reading the involvement issue, and clearly, my comments are more in line with the fact that, having seen what they can do with that space in the current condition that it's in, you can only imagine how great it will be when they get to actually take the money that they've raised and put it into the space and create the environment that will allow the arts to thrive in the downtown. My wife and I had occasion to go. We were invited over to the Cabot Theater in Beverly, which is larger, and to be involved in that. And one of the comments made by the person involved in that was that it's amazing what a venue like a black box or a theater can do for the businesses in the downtown. The promotions that can be had with restaurants and, you know, they get people moving within that city. And this person talked about, you know, literally, the hundred people, hundreds of people that they have going to their theater that walk out and visit the restaurants and they make a night of it. And that's helped all those businesses grow and survive. And, you know, our downtown has been in such need of something to pull. You know, I'm sorry that Mr. Tedesco left, because I think, you know, he might be a piece of that magic that will help bring the life to the downtown. I certainly know that the Black Box Theater will be a piece of that magic. The events that I've attended there are just amazing, and you feel comfortable. It's an intimate space, and it's a great way to utilize that space. And I think of the many votes over 10 years that I've been allowed to take for different venues and different issues, whether it be flooding, parking, lakes, bike trails, this will go down in my memory as one of the better votes, one of the more memorable votes, to have brought something of such meaning to a city as a Black Box Theater. So I'm not only a supporter, but a proud supporter and an advocate for this to go forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Gravel. Counsel cherished.
Thank you. I hadn't had the opportunity to go to the Black Box and the events only because of conflicts in my own schedule, and I'm sorry for that, because with this business and the other business, the Breaking Grounds, are probably the two most exciting businesses that has came down downtown. And this is business that the city has been talking about having downtown for the Black Box Theater, and this group has brought both of them. So I am so excited about it. Of course, I'm going to support it. And again, it just warms my heart to know what the work that you do and to the people you service, that it's coming to Peabody. So not only do I say yes to this, but I say thank you to you, to bringing this to our community.
Thank you. Counsel Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. President. Thank you to Counsel McGinn for being upfront with our affiliation with the Black Box. As a friend of the Black Box, I thank you for separating and allowing us to go forward on this. I share Counselor Gravel's enthusiasm about what this will do to the downtown. But before we even go any further, Susan Ring Brown and I had a discussion maybe two years ago, Susan, I think, about bringing a Black Box Theater to downtown Peabody, and she said, okay, let's see what we can do. Let's make it happen. And it's being recognized right now. This is it. We're on the verge, Susan. And Susan has put together a tremendous team that she recognized behind me, and I'd like to thank all of them. Counselor Walsh, at one of our meetings in regards to the Black Box, spoke about the dollar value that each individual brings to a theater. I think it was $24.50 per person that they spend in the community the night of a theater. And that is a tremendous boost when you think we could fit 100, 125 people in this theater. And, you know, that could bring $25,000 to our downtown. But Susan, I just want to tell you what it means to have both Breaking Grounds, as Counselor Shara said, and what this will do to the clientele that you serve that will enrich their lives. As Northeast Ark does a fabulous job, I think our friend John Archer described it well. Northeast Ark follows Down Syndrome children from birth to adulthood, from birth to death. They follow them every single day, every step of the way. And this is a great credit to your organization, Susan, that you had the vision to create this kind of environment for that clientele. So I thank you. Mr. President.
Counsel Turco?
Thank you, Mr. President. I think my fellow counselors have said it succinctly, but I did want to speak from a firsthand experience. My wife and I actually saw Ted Neary's troupe accidentally on purpose at the Black Box. And, you know, first of all, Tim did a great job with the air conditioning in there, now that I think about it. But anyway, my wife and I actually went there, and I didn't really think much of it as I was watching the show. The show was great, and then I walked out at the end of the show, and I was out at Peabody Square, and I said, you know what? This is incredible that we have a theater right here in Peabody Square. And I was just able to drive 10 minutes from my house and see a show. And my wife and I went over to Brody's and ran at the Counselor Gravel and his family over there. He did not pick up the tab. But it was a really good experience, and I had a great time. But I want to say, this is good for Peabody. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Walsh.
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't know that anybody needs any convincing, but, you know, everybody has touched on a little bit of this. But Ted Neary talked about the Marblehead Little Theater, which is an old firehouse in Marblehead that was converted into a Black Box Theater. And I've had the opportunity a couple times to go over and see his performances over there. And what's really incredible is, as you walk out of that theater, once the show is over, is every restaurant and little tavern in that area is full, and you can't get a seat, which is, you know, it's a great thing. And we have the same thing here. We have a lot of little restaurants right outside of that building, excuse me, that will benefit. You know, and as Counsel Gould talked about, there's a study that shows that in a lot of these communities that have Black Box Theaters, individuals spend on average about $24.60 after the show. That will benefit the local community. But I would be remiss if I didn't congratulate the Peabody Cultural Collaborative and everybody who's been involved in this. You know, it really was an idea, as Counsel Gould said, but people sat down and rolled up their sleeves and said, okay, how can we accomplish this? How can we get to the point where we'll be in front of the city council? And there were days that I think a lot of people thought it would never happen. But the persistence really from this group that is present tonight has been so impressive. And, you know, if they're fortunate enough to get the special permit tonight, I think it's only going to show some great things for the city of Peabody, and a great partnership will be formed and last for a very long time. And I would strongly encourage everybody here to vote in favor of this.
Thank you, Counsel Walsh. Counsel Sinowitz.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a couple of questions. Number one, through you to Attorney Ankle, is the seating that's there, is it permanent seating, or is it just put up and then taken down? It looks like in here that it's permanent seating.
No, it's going to be put up and it's going to be taken down so that we can have other uses in that particular area.
Okay. So your occupancy, and I don't want to discount, when the fire department talks about sprinkler systems, that's based on occupancy. And based on the occupancy and the size of the space, the sprinkler systems, the egresses, the amount of exits for safety. So even though that will be addressed, that's critical. When you start putting that large amount of people into those type of facility, you got to make sure it's always safe. All right? That's number one. What are your hours at night? I didn't quite get, when you have night events?
I think the hours were set for twice, once in the original.
I saw it and then, but I thought it was vague, and I didn't really.
May I read it to you? Currently, the facility, may I?
Yep.
Currently, the facility is open from 7:30 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Monday through Friday with periodic evening advance, and 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. on Saturday.
Okay. But a typical Saturday night, you have a show, is it 7:30 to 10:30? Is it like? Go ahead.
Please, let me finish, if I may. It's, the new requested closing times are 10:30 p.m. Sunday through Wednesday, with 10:00 a.m. opening on Sunday and midnight closing Thursday through Saturday. So that we don't expect that we're going to get heavy use during the earlier part of the week, but we would expect to use it on the times from Sunday through Wednesday. Obviously, we're opening at 10 and closing earlier. And we would have Sunday and midnight closing Thursday, Friday, and Saturday.
I really don't have any other questions. You know, my 10 years on this council, I've seen a lot of projects come before us trying to renovate the downtown and trying to bring life into the downtown. Some of them were, I didn't support, which I thought were ridiculous. But this is probably one of the few projects that I actually think could really be very, extremely successful in our downtown. And it's great that we're helping people with disabilities, but when you start bringing in other types of shows where people with dollars are going to come down there to spend, they're going to go to restaurants, they're going to eat, and I wish it was bigger, to be honest with you. I wish you had more seating, because I think this is going to take off. And with the right type of promotion, bringing in the right type of acts or plays or whatever you're going to do, I think this could be amazing, and it could actually bring some life to our downtown. And just one other comment, the Breaking Grounds is, that was my father's, when he first opened his business, that was in that location in the downtown in 1972. So I go in there a lot to get iced coffee, which is also great. So you're doing some good work, but I think this could be just amazing. And, you know, whoever the marketing person is, whoever the publicity, don't be like the golf course. Market it and bring people in. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Sinowitz. I'd just like to make a quick comment. You know, Peabody has always had a proud tradition, starting with the high school and the theater department. So to see an alumnus come out of that and be intricately involved, as Matt was, that's great to see. I'm sure there are many other citizens throughout Peabody who have a love of the arts, and I'm going to just, not going to repeat all the comments that were made by my fellow counsel, I think they've said it well enough, but I think the arts community in Peabody finally got their shining light. With that, Counsel McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to close the public hearing.
Oh, anyone, I did say opposition twice. I'm sorry you didn't hear it. That's okay. Sometimes it's a big, loud cavernous room. Feel free to come and address the podium, state your name and address. Absolutely.
Hi, my name is Linda Bettencourt. I live on Sixth Spring Street Court. We're not saying we're in opposition of this. I mean, this is the first time we've actually heard this. Sixth Spring Street Court is literally the street that's right here. There are five homes that are there, and we're one of them. We've been there for about 40 years now, and we've seen a lot of development going on in that postal service. But this is going to be a huge impact, I mean, a huge impact for the people who live there. One, you know, where they're planning on building this, it's a metal tin can. So I know you talk about sound. I want to know how that's going to work when it's literally a metal building and how you're going to reduce the sound in a metal building. Also, too, you said there's going to be about 128 seats. That's like, what, 65 cars, not even including workers? Like, where are those cars going to park? Because, again, you know, that street, there's barely any parking on that street. And again, that's going to impact us. Another thing that was mentioned was the garage and where things are going to be driven in, I'm guessing the catering trucks. That is our street where catering trucks are going to be driving back and forth to, you know, drop off, you know, whatever, you know, deliveries they're going to do. Another thing is going to be, is are people going to be parking back there? Is there, where is the parking going to be? Because, again, that's like a huge concern for us, and how much traffic is going to be coming through Spring Street going into this complex? You know, I'm for the arts. I mean, I love the arts, and I think this is, it definitely does seem, you know, really interesting, and it is exciting, and I can understand that for Peabody, you know, because I am getting excited about just all the development that's happening. But it is a huge concern. I mean, there were other people here, but they left because, again, it is 10 o'clock here at night. But this is going to impact us. I mean, I heard 10 o'clock at night. This is not just people inside. These are people leaving outside. And where are those people going to smoke when they're going outside? Where are they going to hang out? Where are they going to congregate? You know, I heard, like, Summer Street is where they're going to be coming in, I guess maybe two entrances they're coming in, Summer Street in the beginning. I'm not really sure how that's really working, but, you know, it is a concern. So I know we've been hearing a lot about, like, the arts and, you know, Black Box, and I was reading about Black Box. It sounds very interesting. But again, you know, I just want you guys to really think about the people who do live there. There are people who live above it and beside it, and it is a huge concern for us. So please, whatever decision you make, just really think about those people who live there. live there, because it will impact us. Thank you.
All of those issues have been discussed. All of those issues have been discussed, and hopefully, we've addressed them and will continue to address them as we move forward, if in fact we're able to. I'm going to have the architect and the builder address the issue relative to soundproofing. I'm not capable of doing that. But if you look at the plans, I think I can address all of the other questions or issues that have been raised. There, if you look at the plans, there are six parking spaces that can be used to the right and rear for vendors. Access and egress will be from Foster Street. Access and egress for people attending the theater will be from the front door at Foster Street. Vendors, people participating in the entertainment to be offered will be accessing the property from the rear, through Foster Street, and leaving from the rear through Foster Street. Only on occasion, if you have a service vehicle, a larger van, will the other entrance or exit be used. Everybody will be directed to use Foster Street for purposes of access and egress. As far as parking is concerned, we have surveyed the downtown area. We are told by the Community Development Office that within a radius of maybe about 200, 300 feet, going all the way up to where Brothers and Walgreens is, and then around, down around Foster Street, that there are approximately 307 spaces available. All of the spaces in the municipal parking lot will be made available to us. And if, in fact, it is as successful as we hope it is, we intend to be able, or we intend to attempt to obtain parking rights or privileges with some of the businesses that exist and do not operate at night along Foster Street. We've addressed as many of these issues as we possibly can. Again, the only issue that I can't address personally right now is the noise issue, and I'm going to ask our architect, Ryan McShara, to address that for me, and perhaps maybe even our builder.
Yep. Ryan McShara, Red Barn Architecture, 84 High Street, Ipswich, Mass. So the plans at this point are conceptual in nature, but we certainly have started to take some of these code issues and zoning issues into account as we start to move through the design. And sort of the next step will be to study these issues in greater detail. So especially in regards to sound attenuation, we'll start to consider materials that we use in the building envelope. At a base minimum, we're going to be adding insulation to the outside walls. We'll look at any sort of special applications we can use, including sound deadening mats, you know, thin layers of rubber, anything that we can do to sort of mitigate that sound as it escapes the building and protect the neighbors is certainly going to be at the top of our list. Likewise, for any new mechanical equipment on the rooftop or outside of the building, we'll certainly look into ways that we can successfully screen that, and again, keep the noise on our property as opposed to bouncing out and around the neighborhood.
Thank you. I just do want to assure that there will not be parking on, on the side street, and that, you know, for exhibits that we have now, we do not park, don't have people park there. And I'm also be happy to give you my email address and phone number to call me with any concerns along those lines at any time.
There currently is an opening, I believe, from the old post office backyard out to Spring Street Court, and it's being used by people on Spring Street, Spring Street Court. They come up, go down Spring Street, and then come out onto Foster Street. We're not going to stop that. We're going to continue to allow people on Spring Street Court to use the driveway. We're going to allow people on Spring Street to continue to use the driveway. We're going to try to be as good a neighbor as we possibly can. I'm not going to say to you that there won't be issues going forward. I can't prevent that. People are people, and things happen. But I do think that what we have to offer downtown PBD, Foster Street, the other businesses that exist downtown are going to, going to lead to an improvement of the entire area, and hopefully, that's going to lead to improvement of Spring Street, Spring Street Court, the values. I see this as building value, not as something that will take away from the value that you have or have had over the years. I remember in 1954, when I was 10, 11 years old, when the flume broke, we were jumping off the second story of one of the bar rooms on Foster Street into, into the flood on Foster Street. I think, I think getting to the black box theater, the point I'm trying to make, we've come a long way. Foster Street has, and I think this is going to continue to improve the entire downtown area. It's a very, very positive contribution. I hope I've answered your question. I'm sure I haven't allayed your fears, but hopefully I've answered your question.
Council McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. And one of the issues that was just raised by the abut that I think you might have skipped over was smoking, and I know you've addressed that. So if you could speak to the smoking issue, I believe it's established there's no smoking anywhere on the premises, and specifically not in that rear area. So if you could just speak to that.
No smoking allowed on the premises.
Right. Thank you, Mr. President. Move to close the public hearing.
For the motion, on favor and opposed, the vote. Counsel McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to approve the application from offshore Heritage Associates, Northeast Ark, One Cell Side Road, Damas, Mass. for a special permit to allow for a theater, a black box theater, with limited function and reception hall, special event venue involving public and private events located at 22 Foster Street, PBD, Mass., as filed in accordance with Section 4.2.3, 4.2.5, 6.1, and 15.7 of the PBD zoning ordinance with the following conditions. One, business hours shall be in accordance with the application. Two, construction hours shall be Monday through Friday, 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., and Saturday, 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Three, service vehicles' access to the rear of the building shall only occur during business hours. Four, the applicant shall make ongoing reasonable efforts to prevent noise from becoming disruptive to residential abuttes. And five, the applicant will comply with the direction of the Health Department Communication dated July 13, 2017. So moved.
Any discussion on the motion? Roll call vote.
Counselors Manning, Martin.
Yes.
Garabedian.
Yes.
Gravel.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Ghul.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Walsh.
Yes.
Mitsoulis.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
Sinowitz.
Yes.
Saslaw.
Yes.
Motion carries 11 to 12.
Thank you for your support.
Next up, reports of committees. We already heard from Council Walsh earlier. Committee for the whole executive session, nothing to report, just pending litigation. That needs to remain in confidence. Motion, orders, and resolutions. Council Manning, Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Co-motion with Counselor Mitsoulis at 26 Wilson Terrace. If Department of Public Works could take a look at the sidewalk in front of 26 Wilson Terrace for sidewalk repair, that it dips so that there's a pretty big puddle that's right out in front of a senior's front door, out in the senior housing down on Wilson Terrace. So if they could take a look into that. So moved.
For the motion, on favor and opposed, the vote.
Thank you. And a co-motion with Counselor Sinowitz. Residents at 3 Samos Circle would like the city to come by and take a look at the damage done by a tree to the sidewalk, and just to guide them in exactly who's responsible for that, whether it's the resident or the city. So moved.
For the motion, on favor and opposed, the vote.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And lastly, I would like to refer to Public Services Committee to have a meeting with...
So what is in this?
The DPW and the Fire Department regarding the progress on the water treatment repairs down on Coolidge. I'd like the council to take an active role in the oversight of this costly project and...
What is this?
Keep residents informed of the progress. I took a walk down there the other night, and it was probably about 5:30, and there just didn't seem to be much activity. I think there were a couple of guys working on the roof, but it really didn't seem like too much had been done going on down there. So I really want a status update. And I'd also like to hear from the Fire Department exactly what happened, if we could get a report out of what exactly happened there. So moved.
For the motion, on favor and opposed, the vote.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No further motions.
Counsel Gravel.
Thank you, Council President. Under suspension of the rules, I'd like to receive Item 7A and refer to the Finance Committee.
For the motion, on favor and opposed, the vote.
And under suspension of rules, I'd like to receive 7C and note the commendation.
For the motion, on favor, the vote.
And lastly, I have to ask Counsel Walsh a question. Counsel Walsh, what is the address of the house next to you with the tree that's falling down on the wires?
That would be Two Dueling Circle. Through you, Mr. President, to Counselor Gravel. That issue has been going on for quite some time. PBD Municipal Light Plant has been contacted several times, but said that they can't do anything because the tree itself is on private property. I have talked to the neighbor recently, and he is waiting for his insurance company so that the rest of the tree can be removed.
Yeah. I mean, my concern is that the tree has rotted and twice fallen, two pieces of it have fallen off, once in the sidewalk.
Once in my driveway.
Once in your driveway. And then there's a, there's a piece right now that is just literally resting on the main power lines for Linfield Street. And you can see the tree has rotted to the core. So it's only going to take one bad storm before that comes down, and a lot of people are inconvenienced. I would just hope that, you know, the part that is touching the property of the city, which is, well, the Municipal Light Plant, they should be able to at least trim it off so that we don't end up with a disaster.
Mr. President, I am not averse to any motion that you will make that would help that situation. Counselor Turco and I had a conversation earlier this evening about a sensitivity of asking for something that is right near you. So...
Well, I'm going to help you out right here.
Great. Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion that the PBD Municipal Light Department, as well as the city's tree department, go to the Two Dueling Circle property and have the tree removed, taken off the wires, so that it doesn't present a hazard to either the abutting neighbors or anybody walking down that street, because it is just an accident waiting to happen. So moved.
For the motion, on favor and opposed, the vote.
Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Counsel Turco.
Thank you, Mr. President. Under suspension of the rules, I'd like to receive and approve Item 9A, but just the first three petitions for block parties, and I will leave the remaining three to their respective ward counselors, in case there's any discussion regarding those. But the three that I would like to approve are Bay State Road between Lynn and Lake Shore, which has already taken place, 1 to 10 Allen Road, and 27 to 45 Benevento Circle. Those three have already taken place, and I will leave the other three for the councils.
Thank you.
Move to, I have an issue on Farm Ave. that most of you are probably aware of through some research and through talking to residents. This has come before this council on November 10th, 2011, then on March 22nd, 2012, then again on March 14th, 2013, three consecutive years. And this is to bring city sewage to Farm Ave., which is the last street in PBD that does not have access to city sewage. They are still on septic. I understand there's some other houses within the city that are on septic, but that's their option. These people don't have an option. We've received 100 estimates on this. I have a new estimate that was just submitted that I will submit to the city clerk's office this week. I would like to refer this matter back to the Public Services Committee, and I would also ask this council if they would be amenable to allowing these residents to speak for a fourth time at that subcommittee. And also, if, Tim, if you could invite Will Paulitz, the mayor, and Dave Terranzoni to attend that meeting, I think it would be beneficial, and maybe we could actually get these people on the sewage system.
Yes, that'd be Council Manning, Chair on that committee.
Yes, sir.
For the motion, on favor and opposed, the vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. Also, I have a motion to have Public Services repair the sewer on Ralph Road, which has recently been found to be a collapsed sewer and not connected on both sides of the street.
For the motion, on favor and opposed, the vote.
I have motion to repair the apron of Lended Road and Demory Terrace, which was on my paving list but never got done, and the residents, it is a very small area. I believe the city can do it themselves without contracting this out. So if you could refer that to Public Services.
For the motion, on favor and opposed, the vote.
And last but not least, Ascenic Road, which is off of Oak Ave. and Bartholomew Street. It was one of the only streets that was not paved in that area this year, off of Oak Ave. A resident brought to my attention that 90% of the street has pavement. It's the remaining 10% that is gravel, and because of that, the plows don't go to the end of the street. And he makes a good case that he should have pavement for that last 10%. So I'm not asking for the street to be repaved, but again, I believe this is something the city of PBD can do. It's the last remaining 10% that we should pave for those two or three residents that live at the end of that street.
For the motion, on favor and opposed, the vote.
And lastly, move to receive a late communication, Mr. President. And that is on your desk, Counselors, and that is the dedication ceremony of the Alajad O'Donnell South Memorial Pass or Savante Playground, and that will be Wednesday, July 26th, at 10:30 a.m. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counsel Turco. Counsel Ghul.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a co-motion with Counselor Mitsoulis to have a stump ground at 36 Highland Park. Tree was removed a couple of years ago. That might have missed the schedule on that. I'd like to have the tree department take a look at that. So moved.
For the motion, on favor and opposed, the vote.
And also, a co-motion with Counselor Mitsoulis to have DPS erect a no parking sign on the strip of land between two driveways, Tim, that are actually on Evans Road, but the front door is 56 Margin Street. So there's two driveways with a small strip of land, and people park blocking both driveways. So it's below the actual dimensions of a legal parking spot. So if we could have a no parking sign erected at the side of Evans Road, 56 Margin Street's the front address. So moved. Thank you.
For the motion, on favor and opposed, the vote. Thank you, Counsel Ghul. Council McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Under suspension of the rules, move to receive Item 8B.
For the motion, on favor and opposed, the vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. Under suspension of the rules, move to receive Item 8D. So moved.
For the motion, on favor and opposed, the vote.
Under suspension of the rules, move to receive Item 8L. So moved.
For the motion, on favor and opposed, the vote.
No further motions. Thank you, Mr. President.
Counsel Walsh.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have two motions. The first one is, I don't usually make motions to the Department of Public Services, but I have a constituent on Linfield Street who has an issue. So I'd like to make a motion that the potholes and...
So I'd like to make a motion that the potholes in front of 161 Linfield Street be filled. So moved.
Heard the motion. On favor and opposed, the vote.
And my second motion, Mr. President, is to formally invite the superintendent of the Essex Technical Regional, Essex Regional Technical School and our school committee representative to come before the council, and also invite the PBD School Committee. But I would like that as a formal invitation to them sometime no later than the end of September. And on that motion, Mr. President, we had some discussion during the budget of the fact that, you know, we have asked the superintendent to appear before us, but I thought maybe if we formally invited them, and our own school committee should be included, just to have a discussion not only about what they're doing for our current enrollment in the school system, but also, I think we're missing an opportunity at the Regional Technical School for programs, maybe for some of the students who don't get accepted as full-time students, but maybe want to avail themselves of some of the courses, maybe a course at a time, and also for adult education in the evenings. We should be looking at that, and I'd just like to know what, if they have any plans for that. So a formal invitation with a time certain, I think, would be beneficial to all.
And Counsel Walsh, would you like to include the PBD Representative, James Laikas, on that invitation also?
Yes, please. Thank you. That's it, Mr. President. Thank you.
Now, Counsel George.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have two motions. I'd like to have the Tree Department remove branches off the home at 12 North End Street. It's a city tree, Mr. Chairman, and it's growing on the resident, the owner, who lives at 12 North End Street, and he'd like to have it removed, and it's a good request. So also, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to have a handicap sign put up at 32 Union Street. So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Heard the motion. On favor and opposed, the vote. Thank you, Counsel Mazzullis.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Counsel Sherers.
Thank you. Under suspension of rules, I'd like to approve block party Wilcock and Barnum Ave. So moved.
Heard the motion. On favor and opposed, the vote.
And also, a co-motion with Counsel McGinn to look at...
Walsh.
I'm sorry. Counsel McGinn to look at adding a sidewalk from Forest Street to Summit, to where the sidewalk ends on Summit on the opposite side of the street. And my thought is to be able to have people be able to walk down Summit, at least on either side. We have a frisbee golf course right there that people cannot come on a sidewalk getting to that, walking. I know we promote people to get out and walk and move instead of driving. The spaces down there is limited, but there is no way, no sidewalk on Summit from Forest Street going to there and all the way down. So if we're able to have them meet somewhere in the middle, so moved.
Heard the motion. On favor and opposed, the vote.
And I would like to make a motion, maybe to send it to Legal Affairs, to have an ordinance to allow our police department to remove people who are participating in our parks during concerts or other activities that may be intoxicated time after time after time after time. There is no ordinance for them to be able to give them a no trespassing stance on not coming back to the park. They can ask them to leave for that day, but they can be back the next week doing the exact same thing. So I would like maybe Legal Affairs to look at how we can create an ordinance to give the police the power to evict people who continue to act like this when we have family affairs going on. So moved.
Heard the motion. On favor and opposed, the vote. Counsel Sinowitz.
Thank you, Mr. President. My first comment is to Counsel Walsh, good luck. I tried for two years to get him to present a budget, so I don't know if they'll, maybe they will for you, you might rate, but I hope, I can only hope. Under suspension of rules, move to receive Item 8G and move approve all papers being in order, Mr. President.
Heard the motion. On favor and opposed, the vote.
On Item 9A, I have a block party, and there's a couple of items on it. It's the one on Birch and Scott Drive. First, there's a typo here. It says Birch and Scott, then it says Temmy and Scott. That'd be a really big block party. That would be one side of the ward to the other. So that's, I don't know what that is. But I did have a complaint from a resident about the hours of this. It was like 2:00 to 11:00. And I'm requesting that this thing be shut down at 10:00 and we're done with it, because it was pretty loud and raucous. And hey, look, I appreciate people having a good time, but they had a band playing in the middle of the street, and although some people do appreciate hard rock, some people don't. And I think you had 11 o'clock at night, it's a little much. So I'd like to see the party done and gone by 10:00, and the band done by 9:30, and then a half hour to shut down. And I think from 2:00 to 10:00 o'clock, they can have a pretty good time. So moved.
Heard the motion. On favor and opposed, the vote. So moved.
I had requested to you, Mr. President, about meeting, set up a meeting, is it next month, on the Golf Course Subcommittee? Have you, has that been scheduled to discuss it?
We haven't, I have had some brief discussions. We haven't set the agenda yet, so I do have it in there.
That'll be on next for August?
I will do my best. I just need to speak to the clerk and go over how many subcommittees, but I, it is my goal. At the latest, it would be the first in September, not the second. But I just, I don't want to commit to something. I don't know what else is out there right now. But, and I'd like to have a, you know, it's an August meeting. I want to make sure we have full participation, but it'll be on the agenda, I guarantee.
But if it's something that we've got a busy schedule, I'm willing to do an off-night, and we can just focus in on that and have some good discussion about it. Okay, so you'll let me know on that. And then, I just, my last comment, as we touched on a little about, I'm very concerned about what's going on, and I don't understand some of the thinking on the planning board. And look at, and, you know, when somebody builds projects, we, city makes a lot of money, building permit fees, this and that, but, you know, that's not their role. I've heard, oh, how much money that brings in. That's really not the role of the building, the planning board. And when I'm told that I can't put in order conditions and they're not going to approve truck routes, I don't know where I go with it. If I put it in and they say, that's not our purview, or public safety isn't your purview when there's a subdivision, so I think we're going to have to have some more discussions on it, because I don't know where it's going. And I touched on it early, it's just not about 20,000 square farts, is it R1A, is it Underground Utilities? There's a lot more that goes into it. And I'm almost like, I'm, this is, you know, I got this coming up, and I don't want to go in there, and then they say, well, we can't approve that, we can't approve that, we can't approve that. So I don't know what they can approve. So I'm going to just wait until a little further, until I see where this is going for the Birch Street project. I don't know if there's any, John, you have one going up on Ralph Road. I don't know what the timing is that, but, you know, in terms of order of conditions and what power we have and what they're willing to listen to and not listen to, or just totally dismiss us, then we, I have no, I have no clout to, I don't know where we go from there. If they're not going to approve my truck routes of where the, not my truck routes, working with the police, if they're not going to approve that, I don't, I don't know what we do. We just let them weave through by the school up the neighborhood. So it's a concern, and let's see where it goes, you know, as more time progresses. Hopefully it'll be in January, and we'll, you guys can handle it then. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Sinowitz. I just have one motion, motion to request the Department of Public Services, between the light poles of 23 and 25 Gooddale Street, replace the dangerous curves sign that has, that came down the last month or so. Could I have a motion to receive 8A?
So moved.
Heard the motion. On favor, the vote. HC. HC. That was for the, that was more for the ZBA, so then, motion to...
Motion to receive.
Please. So moved. Counsel Walsh, thank you. 8F, please.
Motion to receive, and should we refer that to Legal?
Legal Affairs. It's in the ordinance.
Thank you. 8H, Counsel Walsh, I don't believe we received that yet. 8H?
HD.
HD, Counsel Sinowitz took HA. 8H, motion approved, thank you. HA, we did already. AK is done. We have one more block party. It was a late communication, I believe? No? Oh, Buttonwood Lane. Who's Buttonwood? Counsel Sherers, thank you. Motion to receive and accept. So moved. Taxcabs, Limousine Drivers License, Counsel Gravel.
Taxi Limousine Driver License, new. Walter Jovary, license number seven. Andrew Smith, license number eight. Anthony Zakari, license 10. John Miley, license 11. Donald LaMontague, license 12. And Rex Kemp, license 13. Move to receive, approve. Subject to all papers being in order.
Thank you, Counsel Gravel. And also, could you do 9C, please?
Taxicab License Transferer, Sunshine Car Service, 153 Newbury Street, license number 39. Motion to receive and approve. Subject to all papers being in order.
Thank you. Can I have a late, motion to late communication from Care Dimensions in the Lock for Hospice? Motion to receive. Counsel Walsh. Unfinished Business, 10A. Ready for council adoption. Annuance amending Section 1994.
Move to receive and adopt as advertised.
Heard the motion. On favor and opposed, the vote. And 10B, annuance amending Section 28-16 Sew and Water Rates of the Code of the City of PBD.
Move to receive and adopt as advertised.
Heard the motion. Counsel Gravel, thank you. Motion adjourned?
No.
I'm sorry, Counsel Manning?
Roll call.
Call on 10B, please. Counsel Manning.
10B, okay. Counselors Manning, Martin?
No.
Garibedian. Gravel.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Gould, not there? McGinn.
Yes.
Walsh.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
Sinowitz.
Saslaw. Yes.
Motion carries 6 to 2.
Have a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.